Okay, I will call the meeting to order. It's Monday, November 7th, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll grant permission, or will grant permission, to Westwood to tape the meeting. Is there anybody else who would wish to record this meeting? Okay. Three updates, under Chairman's update. First, this coming Friday is Veterans Day, and we will hold the annual Veterans Day ceremonies. It's actually hosted by the Veterans Department and the American Legion Post 320. The weather permitting schedule is for this to take place at the Veterans Park, which is right at the 109 and Pond Street. So, the ceremony will be out there, and I think in the past, if the weather hasn't gone in our favor, it's gone over to the Council on Aging Building.
Right.
But I think the forecast so far looks good, maybe getting on the chilly side. This, given it's 11:11, we hold this event at 11:00 a.m. at the park, and the public is cordially invited to join us for this ceremony. I say "us," but I don't think I'll be there, and I've asked Mike, you, to speak on our behalf, if you would do that Friday morning. Thank you. Okay. Just a brief note that we have two Eagle Scout ceremonies coming up that we've been notified about. One is on Saturday, November 26th, 2:00 p.m. at First Baptist Church, for three new Eagle Scouts from Troop 3. And then we have another ceremony on Sunday, December 4th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Islington Community Center for Troop 1, and another three young men who will be earning their Eagle Scout. Hopefully, that so far works with my schedule. I know we're all invited to attend, so these are really very nice ceremonies, and we keep having a large number.
On the 4th, that'll be just before the tree lighting ceremony.
Just before the tree lighting, which is at 4:00 p.m. this year?
It's at 4:00 p.m. this year. We have too many, we have a lot of events, a lot of people wanting to participate this year.
Oh, okay. Well, I know it's early to be talking about tree lighting, but that will be on
It's all planned.
Sunday, December 4th, and children in the community will find out more about that through the schools. Okay. And third, and I'll have an appendage to this third one. We just, in Westwood, completed the early voting last Friday, which was overseen by our very qualified town clerk, Dottie Powers. And with all the work she and others did to make that happen, Westwood received a Silver Award from the state, meeting many criteria that were involved in the, in receiving Medal Awards. On October 21st, Senator Rush and Representative Paul McMurtry came to Westwood to give both Dottie and Mike a presentation of that award. So, thank you to Dottie, and any of you who see her, be sure to thank her. I know there were many people on the town staff and many volunteers who helped make that happen. And thanks to the guys at the DPW for your help in having a couple parking spaces available. And I'm sure it was busy around those quarters, but the outcome was 33.7% of Westwood voters turned out in the course of two weeks to vote early. So, that leads me to the appendage to that comment. In case people didn't know, tomorrow is the election day. And I just want to note for people, polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and if you need any additional information, the town's website has a lot of that information for poll locations. Okay, so, on to our business at hand. We're going to start with, I'm going to take something out of order. First, under New Business, we have an official resignation from the Board of Health. Tara Summers had let us know earlier that she would be moving out of town in September, and so we've officially received her letter of resignation from the Board of Health. So, I want to thank her for her service, and I'll take a motion to accept the resignation.
I move that we accept the official resignation of Tara Summers from the Board of Health due to her relocation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. So, that allows us to take up the next item. So, we have tonight an appointment to the Board of Health. Roger Christian's here. I told Roger I wouldn't give him too hard a time, he's coming before us tonight. Anyway, Roger is a retired physician, and he has, how long have you lived in Westwood? You've raised your family here, you've been here long since the kids moved out?
We moved in '74.
'74, well, that is wonderful. And it's really nice that you're willing to give back to the community now that you have a different kind of time on your hands. I know you've already been very busy. And we have some information on Roger's background, and I know he met with Mike and Lynda Shay, and all agree that Roger would come before us tonight. So, any questions for him?
Not at all, welcome, my boy.
Impressive experience, thanks for stepping up.
It's great. Okay, so, Roger, do you want to say anything before we do a motion about your interest, or just respond to the call?
This says it all.
My interest is such that it's, it's nice to be able to expand into a new area. And having spent so many years in town, it's good to be back in Westwood. When I say "in town," I'm talking about Boston.
Yep, great, thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move to reappoint Roger Christian as a member of the Board of Health for a term to expire June 30th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. Roger, we usually do three-year terms, but given that your predecessor resigned midterm, it will be over, over a year, and then you'd be up for reappointment June 30th, 2018, if you would be interested. If you would be interested in continuing, I have no doubt you'll do well. It's just I wanted to explain why the, the cycle is a little bit different, and we work really hard to have everything be on June 30th, because, I don't know, how many positions do we appoint?
498, I think.
That's all, 498. So, you're one of 498 people that we get to appoint, so thank you again, thank you for stepping up. Okay, next.
May, may I?
You may. Unless you
You're welcome, she'd like to stay for our business.
I have other commitments.
Thank you, yes, please. Our next agenda item is an introduction of our new Housing and Zoning Agent. Nora, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce you to Sarah Bouchard.
Hi, Sarah.
Sarah joined us on October 19th, so she's been here just a couple of weeks now. She came from the Boston Housing Authority, where she worked for a number of years since graduating from Northeastern University. She has a wealth of experience in the field of housing, and she's a very quick study in the zoning area. You may recall that we used to have two part-time positions, a zoning administrator and a housing administrator, and we combined them into one full-time Housing and Zoning Agent in order to provide better service to the residents. So, Sarah resides in Norwood, so she's got a better commute as well.
Not a bad commute.
And we're very happy to have her aboard. She's already dove right into a lot of work. She came to her first zoning meeting the day she started working.
Jumped right in.
Took care of all the applications, got all the decisions recorded, pretty much in record time, and is looking into rewriting our housing production plan, which I don't believe has been written since the early, maybe 2000, or maybe even earlier than that.
Wow. Wow, welcome, Sarah. So, I'm glad you stepped forward and you expressed interest. It sounds like you rose to the top very clearly, and it's a great group of people to work with, so I hope that you'll enjoy the experience of working for Westwood.
Thank you.
Yeah, any questions, Johnny?
No questions.
No, we met earlier, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm sure they'll keep you busy, and I know we have a lot of things going on with the housing and our affordability status, so some very important work. So, good luck, and if you ever need us, let us know, but you're in great hands.
Agreed.
Well, thank you for coming forward tonight, good to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Sarah.
Okay, we're going to keep moving right along. Tonight, we have one of our assessors with us, Maureen Bleday. So, this is the time of year when we do our tax classification hearing. And this was a publicly noticed public hearing, Mike?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Maureen, thanks for joining us, and Pam and Debbie, thank you for being here. I think this is going to be a little bit easier than last year, but I'll let you tell us if that's the case. I'll turn it over to you, I couldn't do justice to this, so I'll just let you have the floor.
All right, well, thank you. This is always, we've done this every year, and just to remind you what we're doing here, this is, we're a split rate town, which means that we can charge one tax rate to the residents and one tax rate to the, to the commercial side. And every year, the assessors, once they've completed the values, will look, and we make a recommendation to you about what we think that split should be. Ultimately, it's your decision, but we make a recommendation. And a lot of it is that we've had history looking at this, we understand the goals of the town, we understand the values of the town, and so we're coming in with a recommendation to stay steady with what we've recommended the last couple of years, which is to do 1.7. But let me just back up, and I know that they've created a PowerPoint presentation for you just to give people an overview about where we are with our values. So, just so you know, the values that we look at are based on January 1st, 2016 values and sales during calendar year 2015. Any new growth, we can actually go up to June 30th, 2016, and look at that new growth. So, that's new building, new houses, new commercial development, we can really push it out that far. So, the University Station value is as of June 30th, not as of today. University Ave continued its new growth as of June 30th. Some of the growth is from apartments and new bridges, but those are classified as residential, as you see, not commercial. One of the things that we've seen historically, and I've been doing this for a long time, is that although we've had a lot of growth and a lot of new growth on University Ave, the residential growth in town is still incredibly robust. So, yes, has University Station increased the value of the base? Absolutely. But when you look at the residential growth between additions to housing, but then also apartment, the apartments that went in down there, and then, and then the new bridges, that residential proportion's high, and that matters when we look at the shift. Overall, when the assessors look at the value, it's 4.48 increase overall for all classes of property in town. The residential increased 4%, and the commercial increased 7%. But just to give you, I think, one of the important things to understand is, yes, commercial increased 7%, but commercial is only 14.8%, I believe, of the overall town value. Going back to what a split rate means, they're about 15% of the value, but they pay 25% of the taxes, and that's a really important thing to understand. Just looking at the value, the value did increase to 14.8%. It was 14.4% last year. If you go back two years ago, it was 12.5%. So, it definitely has been growing, but again, the residential side, when you look, the residential side's been growing even more. The, if you look at the new tax growth, so this is all, all the new building, new construction, the total new tax growth is 2.2 million, 5.84 from the residential, 1.7 million new growth, new tax growth from University Station. And then the personal property, one of the things we're really seeing come online is now that you've got all those properties down there, and the gym, Lifetime Fitness, we've got a lot more personal property revenue that's come into play. So, if you look at Slide 3, again, this summarizes the change in the residential value. And just looking at it, again, the residential value increased 4.04%, but look at the changes, 140 million year-over-year from the year before. The commercial, 7%, but that's a $41 million increase. So, again, you have to keep in mind that the residential keeps outpacing the commercial. I think one of the interesting things in it, and Mike, this dates us, because it goes back to when I first started working with you on this issue. If you go back to 1991, it was that the tax, the commercial value was 25% of the value of property in town. If you rolled back, that's after the real estate recession of that era, it was closer to 40. But we had a lot of farms here, we had a lot of open space, and we had, University Ave was a robust warehouse park. So, you've watched the decline. If you were starting today and instituting a split rate, you really wouldn't put one in with less than 20% value. So, we've been working hard as a town, both on the, you know, Planning Board side, on the economic development side, on the finance side, really to try to make sure we try to hold on to this split rate as long as we can. And why do we do that? Because, and this is where it's complicated for people to understand, the average house, because of this split rate, really is subsidized $1,200 on their tax bill because there's a split rate. If we were a flat rate, the average house would pay $1,200 more in tax. That's how much that value of shifting the tax rate over onto the commercial side means to us. So, and this will, if you go to Slide 4, it shows, we get to pick the, the shift rate every year or recommend it to you, and we've had a lot of discussion and decided to stay at the standard level of 1.7. Just so you know, under law, we can go to 1.75. And there was a time, two years ago, where we were at 1.65. We had worked very hard, historically, we'd been at 1.75, but we tried to pull it back as much as possible, and it's a good thing that we did, because two years ago, when the residential popped up a lot, and we had the commercial that was at 12.5, so one of the lowest levels, we were able to move that shift and mitigate the impact on the residential bills. So, as assessors, we'd recommend that you stay at 1.7, because that gives you a little bit of room, that if something happens on the commercial side, you have a little bit of room to give the residents some relief. I will say, though, it's, again, because we're only 14% of the value and not 20% of the value, from a numbers point of view, it's not as much help as it could be, but it's better than, certainly better than, than nothing, you know, better than if we had a flat rate. There are tables here that talk about, if you look on Table 4, it shows again the shift and the, and the tax rate that we've got. If we did 1.7, what the tax rate would be. I think, I don't know, Pam, you want to talk a little bit about sort of the tax bills generally, unless somebody had a, we can
I just want to make an observation before you do that. I think if we hadn't been able to get University Station off the ground, we would have not only lost the tax shift, we would have had a flat rate, but we wouldn't have had the new revenue.
Oh, absolutely.
So, our homeowners would have been paying considerably more in taxes, and we wouldn't even be able to do the things we've been able to do because of what we've generated with commercial tax revenue.
I think that's the hard thing to understand about this, is, we were talking about that when we were talking about the shift, is if we hadn't done University Station, Westwood's residential would have continued to grow, 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 and you would have had univers, well, you would have had the commercial values at like 10% of the town value, which would have been, really, at that point, you wouldn't be getting the relief on the residential side. It's kind of math in three dimensions, trying to think about the different things that are moving. But, and when we've watched cycles in the market, because we've been doing this for a long time, even when the market gets hit, the commercial gets hit far more than the residential. It's much more, the residential's much more resilient here. So, it's something that we always have to watch and, and, and look at, and it's one little tool in the toolbox, but it is an important one to give people stability in their tax, in their tax bills. The other thing we noticed, too, in terms, you know, some people will say, oh, just tax commercial as much as possible. One of the things we know in the Assessor's Office is that all commercials treated the same, and that's a problem. You can't treat small commercial differently than big commercial. So, can a big commercial development absorb a big change in their tax bill? Probably better than the little ones on 109 and, and Washington Street. And we've always been cognizant of that. Often, if you did an increase and pushed it onto the commercial side, it, it had much more of an impact on the smaller businesses that were less able to afford it. So, we don't have that tool to break apart those two kinds of commercial, and you really have to stay careful, because those are the two town centers, and you don't want to see vacancies, we've been there before. So, 1.7 is, is where we would recommend that the Selectmen end up, but maybe Pam talks about
Just to close out, I'm
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, that slide, I'm going to look at one other thing. So, at the 1.7, the average home in town, which would now be valued at about $598,000. So, the average residential home had a 2% increase in value, is, is now valued at $598,000, would have a tax bill of just over $8,700, $118 increase from the prior year, or 1.3%. So, $118 increase, 1.3%, and as Maureen said, that's still subsidized, is seeing a savings of $1,200 from if we had a single bill. So, that bill would be that much higher. But if we can just look at the next one, Christine.
Do you have a question, Johnny?
Can I have a second, Pam? So, the, the $118 annual increase, how does that compare to prior years?
Yeah, so that 1.3% increase is the lowest increase in a nine-year period.
Mm-hmm. That's a great story.
And we're going to just look at that bill again on the next couple of slides, because we talked a lot at town meeting in May about tax relief, and the Board of Selectmen took some very specific measures to get that. That just didn't happen, that it's the lowest tax increase in nine years. So, we're just going to look at that.
Yeah, but I think, I think that's, I don't want to get lost, it's a really important part of the story. So, there's a $1,200 mitigation to the average homeowner's property taxes, $1,200 mitigation because of University Station, essentially.
Well, it's a split tax rate.
Because of the, because of the split tax rate.
$1,200, and we don't know if, you know, we tried to publicize that, we tried to do some inserts in tax bill, but it's hard for people to understand.
Right, it's not intuitive.
But because the commercial paid, in a sense, more than their fair share, more than, you know, their percent of value, so they're, you know, almost 15% of value, but they pay 25% of the total tax bill in town. That's $1,200 to the average home. If we did not have that split tax rate
The return we made of money to the taxpayers, so their tax bills wouldn't go up.
Even more.
Yeah, and that's what we spent a lot of time talking about at town meetings, you know, we're trying to mitigate the growth of your tax bill. That's tax relief.
That's tax relief, and that's what we want to show here. And I just wanted to start off, the first two slides are the actual slides that we used at May Town Meeting, because I want people to, you know, really make sure, you know, this is what we talked with them about, and then now we have the actual. So, we had this slide at town meeting that showed what Maureen just went through, the, the average home, and their bill in FY16, shown in the green, was $8,601. And last year, that split rate saved that home about $1,100. So, that's where we were starting, and we talked at town meeting on this next slide, that the bill on the left, the, in green, $8,601, that that was projected to go up to what you see in the blue, about a 3% increase. It would have gone up even further if we had had an override to pay for the police station, and what we were hoping was that the bill would come in on the right, in that 1% range. So, we talked with people about this was the plan. It took some very specific steps to get there that the Selectmen put into the budget process, and we have those listed on the bottom. Purposely keeping the debt for the new police station within Proposition 2.5. We appropriated $500,000 of free cash directly to reduce the tax rate, and then we did not spend all of the University Station tax money. We knew there was money coming in, and we very purposely, in the budget process, the Selectmen did an allocation, some to the police station to keep that within, some towards our school and municipal operating budgets, but then a portion unused. So, that was the plan, and we're happy to show this next slide, which is the actual results. So, that bill, again, on the left, current year's 16, $8,601. It would have gone up to the blue, a 3.5% increase, or $303, if we had not taken any measures. And on top of that, if the police station debt was outside of 2.5, that bill would have gone up to over $9,000, or a 4.7% increase. But what you're actually seeing, what our, what our actual bill will be for '17 based on the Assessor's 1.7 recommendation, is the bar on the right. The $8,719 bill, again, $118, or 1.3% increase over the current year. So, again, the lowest increase that we've had over the last, you know, 10, 9, 10-year period, it's a savings, from the, you know, green bar in the middle to the red on the right is a savings of $289, or really taking the bill from a 4.7% increase down to 1.3. So, that's the tax relief we were able to provide. It took a lot to get there, utilizing that free cash, keeping the police station within. We have unused tax levy of $1.5 million. So, what does that mean? That means taxes that we could have spent as a town, that we didn't. We could have gone up higher under Prop 2.5, and we didn't, in total by $1.5 million. That's really unprecedented for the town. Last year's number was about $500,000, it's typically a $1,000 to $300,000. So, again, very specific measures that the Board of Selectmen took during the budget process that really is driving that bill on the right to the level that it is. So, it still is an increase, but it's the lowest increase, again, that we've had in almost a decade, 1.3% or $118, and again, without any measures taken, it would have been what you see in the middle, it would have been over $9,000.
Christine, just a quick question. So, I mean, we've done this, has, I mean, has there been any other communities that we've heard of that have, you know, taken steps like this? I mean, I hear from residents in some of the local towns that have bigger establishments that their taxes continue to go up. So, I'm just wondering, you know, overall, do people realize the kind of steps that we took to really let them feel the effects of University Station on their tax bill, you know, which is kind of unprecedented, pretty much statewide?
It really is. A lot of towns get that new revenue and really want to, you know, they want to use it, and there's always good things to spend our money on. But I think what the Board really tried to go through so much during our budget process last year and talk about with the residents at town meeting, was that we were, you know, using some of it, that we were, you know, being measured and, and, you know, taking our time, that we didn't want to kind of use that all at once. There was enough coming in, Maureen showed you the slide, 2.2 million in, in new tax growth, there was enough to do the police station
Right.
take care of our operating budgets, but still target some for tax relief. So, it was a very planned action. It can be hard for a community to be that disciplined, and the Board certainly felt that during the budget process. You know, it's hard to sometimes say, we can't do other things, there are other projects out there, but we'll take our time and layer them in year to year. But this is real, you know, relief, to have that tax bill that we're going to have for our average home versus kind of what could have been if the steps weren't taken. And if we want to continue this going forward, we'll have to take the same kind of measures each year. But, you know, again, really unprecedented to have the $1.5 million tax levy, and not only does that provide tax relief in this bill, but that's a, you know, excellent financial tool. That gives us room if something happens. The rating agencies rate that very favorably. So, we'll try to spend some time again and get this information out and put it into our tax insert to let people know. So, really, you know, these measures here that the Selectmen took in that town meeting agreed with and voted upon to take some real tax relief, and then, as Maureen went through, you know, it's another whole, in a sense, savings from having that split tax rate.
Right.
That, that $1,200 savings. So, without both of those things, the tax relief measures and the split rate, this tax bill would be much higher, would be almost $10,000 for that average home, and it will be $8,700.
I just have one quick question, and really, there's nothing, probably, but just to answer for myself. Does it always go by .05? In other words, we're, we went from .65, 1.65 to 1.7?
Right.
And then we can go to 1.75. Can it go up to 1.171?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it had to be in 05 intervals.
No, historically, when we were at 1.75,
Yeah.
we were pulling it down, and it was a struggle to get it down to .67. Point, you know, we're just trying to, and, and again, two years ago, we were so glad we did, because it really made a big difference on the
I think that's when I sat in on that meeting.
I think, and we were trying to figure out, and so we actually, Debbie and Pam will run sort of the impact right from 1.5 all the way up to 1.75 for us to take a look at. And that's when you see, really, for marginal savings on the residential side, it hits the commercial much harder, so it's a balance. Just to finish, if, we're recommending the 1.7. The current, the current FY16 tax rate was 14.66. If you stayed with the 1.7, it would pull that down to 14.57. And then the commercial was $28.27 was the rate, it would pull it down just slightly to 28.20. So, that's what we're recommending is the 1.7, and that would be the impact on the rate.
And how does your crystal ball look for next year? No, but I mean, you know
Well, on the upswing, we should have the hotel.
Yeah.
The Marriott should be coming online, so that'll be more new growth for us. The dealerships that, that they started to build, that was only 40% complete for this year. So, we've got the rest of that to bring up.
And the restaurant.
Yes, and, yeah, that
The first of growth.
Right, but I, I go back to the residential growth piece. What we're seeing here is the number of knockdowns in town, and so you're really seeing significant growth, whereas you have a limited amount of commercial space that's going to be renovated. I think as you're watching neighborhoods start to feel the pressure of these knockdowns and, and larger, more expensive homes, we're always chasing it. If we hadn't done University Ave, I don't even want to think about it, but
A whole different story.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
But, but that residential will keep pace for
Yeah, it's still important to
The value, the change in value of the existing homes
Right.
way outstrips commercial growth in value.
Right. But other properties on University Avenue have been selling
Yes.
for high prices. So, that, that also moves some of the overall property value to commercial from residential.
Right. We talk about that, that the universe, what we call University Ave is really only a 135-acre assembly.
Yeah, but there's more
There's additional land, especially across the street and all the way down to Canton, Canton Street. So, we'll see, I mean, certainly the Planning Board probably has a better feel for what, what's going on down there, or what
for what's going on down there, what could go down there. And there'll be a process. But yes, there is a little bit more land down there that could see some more growth. Right, I got that, yeah.
And I think as University Station gets built out, you might see more pressure or for them to purchase the old warehouses, to convert them, you know, because there really isn't a lot of commercial land left in town.
Yeah.
That's one of our biggest problems, yeah.
Yeah. But that's okay. It's a mostly residential community. We have to protect that part. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a recommendation before us, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the Board of Assessors and keep the tax classification factor at a 1.70 for commercial. Second.
I don't think you wanted the word "commercial" in there, but I'll...
The tax...
Yeah, tax specification, the factor is 1.7, okay. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right. We're good on the 1.7?
Thank you.
Thank you for the education, and hopefully, people in the community will absorb all that as well.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much.
And thanks to your colleagues.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Janice, next on our agenda, we have another public hearing. What we're actually doing is opening a public hearing as the local licensing authority, which is also a responsibility of the Board of Selectmen. And this hearing will take place, hopefully, over the course of only three meetings. I know you're trying to get a lot of work done, but sometimes things linger. But the plan is to have us take up this agenda item tonight, at the end of the month, on November 28th, and at our December meeting on December 12th. And we have had our licensing renewals broken down, so that tonight, we are dealing with Auto Class 1 and 2, Common Vicular license, junk and livery licenses is all part of tonight. So I'll turn it over to you, Janice.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The first, on this first night, as you mentioned, I'd like to focus on presenting the Auto Class 1 licenses, one of the Auto Class 2 licenses, and 20 CV licenses, and then all the junk licenses for consideration. I know Christine has worked on the livery licenses, and I don't know if you're going to present that separately?
I can do that, yeah. I can do that when you're at the end of your CV.
Whatever you want. Okay.
Yeah, so go through.
So, as you mentioned, I'd like to get this done in three public hearings. Two would be great, but we'll see how that goes. And some of the items that are requirements for the license renewal include an application, proof of tax certification, just to be sure that all taxes are current for all the establishments that are licensed, proof of insurance, including general liability, workers' comp, and liquor liability as applicable to the alcohol licenses, floor plan, copy and menu as applicable, building, fire, health, and police inspections, and then, of course, the fee for the license. So I've had an excellent response to the first round of renewals. And for Auto Class 1, if you recall, I was here very recently for the Prime Motor Group Acura New License. And the, since you received your packet, I've received almost all of the information for the other Class 1 licenses owned by Prime Motor Group, including Audi, Mercedes-Benz, and Porsche. As you know, all of these, look, all of these dealerships are under construction right now. And I'm asking that the board consider renewal based on, you know, final paperwork and certificates of occupancy from the building department.
Why don't we take up the other ones first, and then we can talk about the auto?
Okay.
I, that's all great background, and I think what I'd like to do is just read off the ones under the license renewals that we have before us. I'll just read the business names, and if anyone wants to put a hold on any of the individual items for discussion, otherwise, you know, if we have no holds, then we'll be able to move forward with that. So Auto Class 1 Mercedes-Benz, Auto Class 2 Enterprise Rent-A-Car, Junk Dealer licenses for Dulbany Jewelers and Kay Jewelers and GameStop, and Common Vic licenses for Dunkin' Donuts at 400 Washington Street, 115 Providence Highway, 208 Providence Highway, and 915 High Street, Islington Pizza and Sub, Tastefully Done Restaurant and Catering, Starbucks on High Street at 736 High, and Starbucks at 101 University Avenue. Let me ask you, there's a Starbucks within Target?
Yes, that's part of Target's CV license.
Westwood Pizza, Mercedes-Benz Cafe, Stewart Westwood Cafe, Sodexo, BB's Cafe and Bakery, Westwood Jade Restaurant, Witch Witch Superior Sandwiches, Orange Leaf Frozen Yogurt, Panera Bread, Chipotle, Mexican Grill, Target Store, which addresses what you just mentioned, Noodles and Company, and Lifetime Cafe. So no holds on those? Any general questions or concerns?
No.
All right. I'll take a motion to approve the license renewals. And are those subject to anything?
No, they're all complete.
All complete, so, great.
I move that we approve the aforementioned licenses for the dealerships, the junk, the Auto Class 1 and 2 Junk Dealers and the Common Vicular licenses as stated. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, as we look at the Auto Class, do you want to wait on anything with Prime, or you want it subject to a lot of things? What's...
Well, of course, I defer to you. Really, it's, it would be, you know, the...
Only Prime Acura is opening before year-end.
Correct.
We haven't heard from Porsche or Audi, right? Have we, we haven't approved those yet?
I have not heard that they're, you know...
So I don't want to be renewing something we haven't done the initial.
Porsche and Audi are transferring.
They're all, they're looking to open all three dealerships before year-end.
But have we approved the licenses for Porsche and Audi?
Yeah.
They have existing licenses that they'll be asking to renew.
Okay.
And then it's only a new license for Acura, but all the three dealerships should be opening in December.
All right. So, and are these all subject to the same completions, or are there varying degrees of incomplete that we're dealing with here?
No, they're all subject to the same completion.
Okay. All right. So we have the three dealerships, Auto Class 1 and under Auto Class 2, Best Buy Auto Sales, and under Common Vic licenses, Cafe Diva, Famous Pizza, and University Cafe and Bagel. So all of those that I just listed would be subject to completion of all the necessary inspections and paperwork, whatever may not be completed.
I have one additional to add, Wegmans. I forgot when I was doing the report.
Just Wegmans.
Just Wegmans.
And they're under the Common Vic?
Right. I'm not comfortable with, say, you know, Cafe Diva, Famous Pizza, University Cafe and Bagel, because I haven't made contact with them, so I'd like to hold off, maybe to the...
But how about Wegmans?
Wegmans, I've made contact. I'm sure they're going to be renewing their license.
You think?
Yes.
But...
Others, I'm not sure. The others, I'm not sure.
Okay. And Best Buy Auto Sales, you've heard from?
No, I have not.
Oh, okay. So, all right, then let's break these up. Let's do just Auto Class 1 tonight.
And Wegmans.
I don't need, you know, we've got time to do Wegmans if you just make contact, but if they, I'd like them to move it along before we renew.
I agree.
Okay. So let's just do the Auto Class 1.
All right. So I move that we approve the Auto Class 1 licenses for Audi, Audi Westwood, Porsche Westwood, and we already did Prime, right?
Well, we have to renew it, though, right?
And the renewal of Prime Acura, subject to completion of all necessary permits and licenses and the certificate of occupancy being issued for the properties. Second.
And the Auto Class 2 license for Enterprise Rent-A-Car is complete?
Yes.
You did that on the first one, okay.
Okay, so I'll take, we have a second on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So that gets Auto Class 1. And those are the ones that are subject to completion of all the other paperwork. Otherwise, we got the other ones. So let's hold on the others. And when you're ready, in the course of the next two meetings, to bring it back, you let us know.
Okay.
Or if it's complete enough where you feel comfortable, then, you know, that's okay to...
Okay. I have, just want to mention a couple of things, please. The two seasonal CVs that we have are Bubbling Brook and the Lifetime Poolside Bistro. And I have not presented those because they are seasonal and would like to just, you know, let you know that I'm holding off until the spring to present those to the board.
That's a good move.
So the paperwork doesn't get lost in things.
Yeah. I'm not worried about Bubbling Brook, but I think Lifetime needs to make sure they're doing what they need to before they... So you want to take up taxis?
I will do taxis. So the Board of Selectmen have 12 taxi licenses out there. As of today, so the applications were sent out for renewals, which include they have to provide us with their license plate, make and model, year of their cars, department approvals, which includes the inspection of those vehicles by the police department, their operator list, including their phone numbers and emails, emergency contact list for their company, workers' compensation affidavits, which is a state requirement, and their license fees. To date, Maurice Cab is the only cab that has completed all of those. The ones that have submitted renewals haven't done inspections, or if they have, we haven't received word, or they're need to go back. I would hold off on any contingencies with these companies, just because this is the second year we've done renewals with them. Yep. And they still are catching on to what needs to actually get done.
Yeah, I don't want to jump the gun on that.
Yeah.
I want them to do the paperwork before we approve them. So we have one before us, Maurice Bakarchi. Close enough.
I was going with Maurice Cab, that was my guess.
Doing business as Maurice Cab. Any questions, comments? Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the taxi license for Maurice Cab.
Period, no?
Period. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, so that's good. So that concludes what we'll do tonight. And is this considered a continuation of the same public hearing to the next meeting, or...
Well, we set it up for three public hearing, or it's three different meetings.
All right. Then we'll do another public hearing at the next meeting.
And we'll, you had mentioned, or Nora had mentioned, trying to list on the agenda, you know, these are the licenses we're going to cover tonight. So the next ones will be the, probably be the alcohol licenses for the next meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. That works quite well. Thank you, Janice. Okay, Mr. Corchen and Company. It takes 12 people to do this?
Mr. Myers?
Hi. Okay, so next on our agenda is an update on our Complete Streets program. And there's been a lot of activity, including what we've previously announced in other meetings, the $400,000 grant from the state. So I will turn it over to you, Todd.
Well, first, I'd like to introduce Mike Myers from TEC. Mike is familiar with the town. He played a large role with the Downey Safe Fruits to School project a couple summers ago. So that being said, we thought it was a good fit to bring Mike in for our complete phase project, our complete phase, Complete Streets projects. And he's lived up to all the expectations that he established with the previous project that we had completed. So tonight, we'd just like to talk about the three major projects that we'll be taking on as part of the $400,000 grant that we received from the state. Mike, I don't know if I want to turn it over to you.
Sure. Sounds good. I've got just a couple of simple renderings, just to give you a preview of what the vision is out there. Let's look at the, this is a picture of Blue Hill Drive at the intersection of Whitewood, looking back up towards Canton Street. The roadway out there today is, ranges from about 30 feet to about 36 feet out there. So with the 30-foot section, we're able to get two 10-foot travel lanes and two 5-foot bike shoulders. In areas where we get a little wider, 36 feet, we're able to get some buffers between the bikes and the vehicles. Here is a, is a snapshot of what it would look like after. The improvements are very simple, very low-cost improvements, basically consisting of pavement markings and signs. There'll be no, you know, real construction work. Everything's going to be within the existing pavement limits.
And it's all new road, too, right?
It's all new roadway. The section of Blue Hill Drive, or the entire length of Blue Hill Drive was paved last summer. So we just felt as though implementing the bicycle lanes to create connectivity down at University Station would be a good feature to, as we identified this too within our prioritization plan within the Complete Streets grant process that we fulfilled.
It's important to note that the state paid for two-thirds on the development behalf of the state.
Yeah, this will tie in really nicely to the state's project down at the cul-de-sac.
And is there, I just can't recall, a way that the bikes could proceed from Blue Hill to get onto University Avenue?
Yes. So down, yeah, now that Blue Hill Drive's been cul-de-sac, there's also an accessory pathway that we can...
I thought so, but it's been a while since I've seen anything on it.
So it should be a nice feature. I know the pedestrian bicycle committee is very excited. This will be the first true bicycle lane that we've created in town. We have a number of shallow markings throughout town that we've incorporated in all of our paving projects, but this is the first clearly identified bicycle lane. So, pretty exciting.
Yeah, well, it gets on the way to get to University Station.
Exactly, exactly. So that was essentially of the three tasks that we're taking on through this grant. This is, not that it's minor, but it's not a construction project. Like Mike said, it's more of an imprint and markings. The second project that we'll be taking on...
Can I make a point before we leave Blue Hill Drive, though? At the public hearing for the traffic comming, the, I think it's the property owner just before the religious institution complained to me, I guess we had tried to correct some drainage problems. He had, and he continues to have them, so why are you doing this?
Yeah, we spoke to him. It was an issue with his driveway apron, and Brendan's been corresponding back and forth.
You're on it?
We're on it. So the second project is the intersection of Pond and Route 109. So several years ago, Mike's familiar with this, the MPO took on a couple of intersections in town to take a look at and say, what can be done here? You know, obviously, there are some issues with this intersection. They also looked at the Manhattan Street, Route 109 intersection. But this being the one that we focused on as part of our Complete Streets program. So they looked at this, there's several issues. I mean, you have, first and foremost, a tremendous amount of width in the roadway itself. The crosswalk is too long.
There's actually three separate crossings from this point all the way over. You'll see the road right in here. It acts more or less like a slip lane for more of a high speed. You can definitely take it at a higher speed. This is definitely a very dangerous spot for pedestrians to cross.
The safe havens in between, within the crosswalk itself, are not necessarily a safe haven.
And the school's right there.
And the school is right there. So we thought it was a great opportunity to take a study that was presented to the Board of Selectmen years ago, after the MPO completed it, and take that study, because it was more or less a wish list item. At some point in time, when the town had the funding to proceed, we would take on this project. Well, lo and behold, $400,000 later, we do have that. And we thought it would complement our third tier of this program, with that being the installation of a sidewalk from Millbrook. So where we're in this vicinity, let's attack it all. It's right within the school district itself. Mike can pull up some images of what this intersection will consist of.
So essentially, on this crossing here, we'll reduce it from three separate pedestrian crossings to two of them, with a good-sized island here in the...
Yeah, what's the width of that island, do you know?
It's wider than it's shown graphically here. In plan, I think it's about eight to 10 feet.
Do you have another, we have another area, like in...
I have a plan view, too, if you'd like to see that, yeah. So this does depict that sidewalk that'll extend from Pond all the way down to Millbrook.
I defer to your expertise, but the bigger, the better.
Yep, of course.
Yeah, we have to just stay within the limits of turning radius and everything, but I agree.
For all available space for that island, I would fulfill it.
This, this has been, the size of this has been maximized, and then this corner has brought in as much as it can without prohibiting emergency vehicles from accessing Pond.
And if you can see in the renderings, too, everything will be cement sidewalks, no more asphalt sidewalks. Everything will be ADA compliant with ramps.
What does the other corner look like by the White House? Is that pulled out at all, or is that...
We pretty much maintain that existing radius that's there today.
We have one more of you, I thought.
Yep, I can show you a... Yep, I can show you a, um, a plan view of that.
Well, I know it's a thousand percent better than before. Have you, or would you want to talk to the schools about that, just from a, previewing it, 'cause it's a crossing guard thing?
Definitely. Paul Secar's been heavily involved as well. Um, with the improvements of this intersection, he's already, he, he's already talking about relocating the crossing guard, perhaps, um, just with how nice and much more improved this whole intersection's gonna be. I think other options are gonna present themselves with respect to the crossing situation, so that's, uh, public safety. But he's, Paul's been in, involved with this process from day one, and he's very excited about this as well.
So you can see on this plan here, this is basically where the curb is today.
Oh, yep.
And then we'll, we'll be bringing in that much, um, to remove the crossing that's here today, so we'll get it down to two crossings.
Yeah, my only commentary, I mean, I, as, as much as you can pull that out, as big as you can make that island, within limitations.
Definitely, definitely.
It's a, it's, it's incredibly dangerous anytime you walk by, yeah.
Well, it'll be exciting to address this, and again, the third, third phase of the whole program will be that installation along Route 109 from Millbrook up to, um...
Yeah, so where is the sidewalk?
Yep. The sidewalk will run along the northerly side of 109 here.
And then how far to the...
Basically, the connection.
To Millbrook.
Yep.
Connection all the way.
Exactly. So the, the program itself, and what we, what the town was awarded was four hundred thousand dollars. We're hopeful that the bids come in pretty aggressive, that we'll have some monies left over. If that is the case, what we're gonna do is look to enhance the sidewalks further up Route 109. Again, while we're in that area, it just makes sense to keep addressing and not really...
You mean enhance new, or...
ADA compliance, um, resurface where needed. Um, the minute we resurface, you have to bring every ramp up to compliance, so...
Nothing wrong with doing that.
We wanna, there's some areas, especially heading westbound on 109, that need some significant improvement. So, I mean, like I said, fingers crossed, hopefully they come in aggressive and we can do some more. But it's just an example of, you know, what this program has brought to the town, and to be able to address, you know, Blue Hill Drive being a pretty significant project, even though it's just painting and striping, and then taking on an intersection like this and a sidewalk installation like we're doing. It's great.
Landscaping for the island that you'd be creating, will that be DPW-controlled?
Yes, I'd like it to be. We've been very fortunate. There's one landscape company that still maintains what's out there now. And with due respect to them, we will reach out to them, but just probably notify them that we'll take it over from here, because it's, for consistency, we like to keep everything uniformed.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate that people volunteered at a time when we had less resources to do it.
Right.
But you, you do lose the consistency and...
You do.
Maintenance.
That's where my OCD comes in, when we have all hemlock and there's one island in town that's pine bark.
That island looks good, though.
It does. They do a great job.
The intersection's terrible, but the island looks great.
They do a great job, but, um, so, you know, that being said, again, pretty excited for this, and Mike's done a great job, and, you know, we're moving forward. Our timeline for this project, it has to be done by July one.
You have to spend the money?
Yeah, so we're right on track, I believe. We're on track to bid roughly what...
From January.
That's excellent. So as soon as the ground blows again?
Exactly. And that's when we do our paving bids, too, so, and that's...
Totally ahead of the ballgame.
Exactly. So we should get favorable pricing and hopefully be able to do some more, so...
Um, so doing that project, uh, would you actually do it? I'm trying to think. The school year, you won't be able to do it without the school year being underway.
We're gonna have to work, think, we're gonna have to work with Ken and Peter Howard, and once we have a more defined timeline, and then we have a contractor in hand, we'll have several meetings leading up to the point at which, which they're out there, and we'll work with the, with the school department. It's gonna be a juggling of some sort, but...
I, yeah, I don't know how involved the project is, but I'm just wondering if more work can be done on weekends versus school days. I don't know.
Definitely.
You guys control that.
Raises the price.
Of course it does. Of course it does. But they also took a bridge down this weekend, you know, and they gotta do it on a weekend. Some things you have to do off schedule because of safety.
Idea, how long would it take to do the intersection?
Um, probably about three months.
Three months.
Tops, yeah.
Oh, that's pretty significant, okay.
A lot of it's on the edge, so it's not...
A lot of it's on the edge, um, there is with the crossing further to the north, and this is an existing crossing at Millbrook. We can certainly set up the phasing so that we make sure pedestrians are crossing safely at each limit, um, to be able to get that sidewalk in on the top side, so we can maintain pedestrian traffic on the, the southerly side.
Excellent. Good news. And then we look forward to the next grant season and all that stuff that you're gonna do, right, Todd?
That's it. More money.
All right. You want to stay there and give us an update? I guess you have more people, too. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, uh, the next agenda item. Hey, Ken, how are you?
How are you?
Uh, we have Canton Everett Ford's traffic calming update. I know there was a meeting last week at the Downey School that I hear went very well, and that's great. I think, Mr. Nicky, you were able to be there?
I was.
And, uh, so, we have materials that you've given us, and we've all read about them and have been following this, so why don't you highlight what you want us to here tonight, and, uh, if there's anything we need to respond to.
Definitely, I'll, I'll just...
Just mention that West Cat has been posted online, if anybody wants to watch the meeting, yes.
Okay, great.
I got it from their Twitter feed to take it to YouTube and watch it, so...
Great. Well, from, you know, the town's perspective, I think Mike can attest to this, um, in all that Ken speak on behalf of the technical, you know, the, the design and everything, all the results. Um, but I think from the town's perspective, I would deem it as a very successful meeting. It's been a project that's been ongoing for upwards to eight, nine, ten years, maybe even more. Um, a lot of involvement...
It's on the other side of it, huh?
Yeah, it is.
A lot of involvement, a lot of evolutions, I guess you'd say, you know, between what we had out there from a temporary setup years ago to essentially what's out there now as a per- as a permanent feature. Um, but the feedback was, was great. I mean, we, we definitely got some good input. Um, there's a couple of issues that were brought up, and it's something that we're thinking of and considering, and would really like to bring some recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen after we've had some more time to digest. Um, and they were, they were, I, I think, Mike, again, it was, it was a great meeting. You know, I left there pretty pleased. Um, what we try to do, and, and what I had mentioned in the meeting, is you try to, try to make as many people happy as possible, and throughout this process, we were receiving feedback that people really were thrilled with what was out there. People were, wanted more, some people wanted less, some people weren't as thrilled. And you're getting hit with four different views of a project, and what you try to do at the end of the day is, hopefully, you can make four out of the four, three out of the four, please, so...
So people who weren't happy, are they the small details that you have before us, or were they big picture? I don't like how this works at all.
No, I, the, small details, but important. You know, I don't want to diminish them by any means, um...
But details nonetheless, sort of?
Yeah, details, you know, for example, one, one issue that was brought up, and I know Mrs. Buckley's here tonight, um, was the double yellow line at Glan Door. Um, and it's something that we're still, you know, Ken and I have been discussing, Mike's been discussing. We're trying to come up with some options. Um, the residents, there's a petition that was signed, the majority of the residents on Glan Door are not in favor of the double yellow line that was put in there as a safety feature for that intersection. Um, so that being said, we're, we're looking into options and still don't really feel comfortable recommending anything and any alternative at this point. Uh, we want to come up with something that...
One option is leave, second option is to remove, and you're exploring...
Exploring other options, yeah. Ken has some ideas, um, as to what can be done in lieu of a double yellow line out there. Um, but overall, again, you know, there was, there was no negativity with respect to the devices that were installed on Canton Street. There was no one that, in the, in the audience that mentioned that they weren't working at all, I mean...
What are the stats that you've gotten as a result?
Overall, volume counts and speed counts are down, but I'll let Ken dive into the specifics.
Okay, why don't you do that, Ken?
Sure.
I think, guys, that's interesting.
Yep, sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just for the record, uh, my name is Ken Hawe with Beta Group. So, um, what I have is the same pre- the, this is the same presentation that we have used.
We're gonna get the short version.
But this, yeah, it's definitely, um...
Thank you.
It's, it's about real good, uh, twenty minutes. So, very briefly, what we have looked at is, we have collected data on the three main street, Canton, Ford, and Everett. And I, I'll just show you one or two examples and the stats. And we also have looked at some of the, uh, streets, the neighborhood streets, for example, uh, you know, Cushing, Spelman, and Kellin, and also Adam and Perry, which is, uh, north of, uh, well, in this case, uh, you know, uh, which is actually, uh, east of Canton Street. So, very quickly... Oh, that's right.
If we know we're gonna do...
That's right.
Sorry.
So, anyway, so showing her this map right here, this is just 128, just to get the orientation, and, uh, north-south here is Canton Street, uh, the project is, uh, towards the end. So we've collected Canton, Ford, which is right here, and Everett along here, and the street in between, and also the street, uh, Perry and Adam. The reason we have to collect some of the data on the side street is because, uh, as part of the, uh, public meeting, uh, they were concerned with the neighborhood that, uh, hey, you know, if we're putting speed home on Everett Street, now people is gonna use my side street to cut through. And so those are the concerns. So we have to capture those side street, and the bottom line is, um, there are no impact at all on all the, uh, side street. There's no increase in speed, and there's no increase in, in volume. So, so let me just talk a little about Canton Street, just to give you an example on, uh, the stats. So what we have done is, uh, in this case, uh, this is Canton Street, uh, right here, 128, it's right here. So we counted three locations, shown here in the red mark, and this is just, uh, south of, uh, Downey, and that's the other location right here, and that's the other locations. So these are the three same locations that we have counted in, uh, you know, before we have intimate, uh, implemented any of the traffic calming devices. So essentially, uh, what you're seeing here is, for example, at this location right here, very quickly, so before, so this is before University Ave Station was even built, uh, and this is in, uh, twenty fourteen, when we did the, uh, data collection. And this is also before Blue Hill was even a cul-de-sac. So that's your speed right here. It was clocked the eighty-five percentile speed at the time before, it's forty miles per hour, and right now is thirty-seven, uh, miles per hour, then for the northbound. And for the southbound, it went from forty-three to thirty-six. So we're looking at a, you know, seven miles per hour reduction to, to, as a traffic engineer, when you look at the seven miles per hour reduction, that's significant, uh, in this case. And if you look at the volume, uh, this, before, which is, you know, a little over ten thousand, and this is the Monday through Friday, uh, you know, the whole week, uh, we actually collected seven day of count, uh, just to make sure we, you know, captured the whole week. And so, and after, it's a little over nine thousand. So you're looking at a reduction of, uh, about twelve hundred cars, and that's, you know, close to, uh, you know, about ten percent reduction. And then on a Saturday, likewise, there's also a reduction of about, uh, you know, a little over nine hundred cars. So, so if you continue on, on every locations, uh, whether it's the Main Street, uh, Ford, Everett, uh, you know, it shows across the board, uh, we have reduction in speed. There's no increase in speed, and if it's anything else, uh, some location comparable, there's really no change. So, so overall, I think, uh, to, you know, quickly summarize, so I'm just gonna go through my, uh, summary sheet here.
Just quickly, too, keep in mind that Blue Hill Drive was shut down, cul-de-sac, and the volume count still went down. One would think that the volume counts would now increase because of that.
So I think, in conclusion, from a speed standpoint, on Canton Street, uh, you know, the decrease of up to seven miles per hour, on Everett is a decrease of up to five, and, uh, Ford, uh, in this case, is seven miles per hour. And there's no impact to any of the side streets, uh, neighborhood that we have looked at.
Was Everett even lower speed to start with than the other two streets, just because of how narrow it is? You know, its relative speed, was it a little bit slower?
Uh, yeah, it is compared to Canton Street. You are correct, yes. Uh, Canton Street was over forty, yeah, it was over forty miles per hour, you know, a lot of those locations. And I think in terms of volume, uh, we're looking at, on Canton Street, you know, up to, uh, you know, ten percent reduction, same thing. Everett Street, uh, there's reduction, and Ford is not as, the reduction is not as high, but, you know, but there is a reduction on all the streets.
It still was ten percent at that, though.
Uh, yeah, yeah, because of...
Ten percent plus the speed lower.
Right.
Significantly lower, which I think was the concern that people in that street
Yeah.
all along, was it as a cut through, the speed of people going through that residential street.
So, so since, you know, the project was completed, uh, you know, we have received, uh, basically, you know, two, two comments that we were aware of. And one of them was they were concerned that the travel lane was still, uh, very wide out on the streets. And, uh, and certainly the other concern was the, uh, the double yellow center line on that Glan Door. So, I'm not gonna go through the exercise that we actually went out and measured each of the locations, uh, and it, it basically shows that, uh, you know, the lane width, uh, in general, we have, uh, reduced, you know, uh, the lane width. And, uh, you know, the designs call for a minimum of ten feet, which is consistent with what, uh, you know, earlier at the presentation, and you have a one-foot shoulder on, uh, each side. So, so that's what we have out there, and, uh, and so...
You really don't want to make that more narrow than that.
No, I think at, at some point in time, in the future, in, not the very near future, but at some point, we're gonna have to resurface Canton Street.
Yeah.
I think at that point in time, then you look to re-stripe, uh, maybe a little bit more narrow. The, it's wider, obviously, away from the devices that we put in all of the islands, but as you get to the islands, like Ken said, you can only taper it in ever so slightly, but once you get to the meat and bones of the island themselves, it is very narrow, so...
Someone a less than ten.
Yeah.
I know.
So, you, you know, we actually had the exact measurement, and, you know, I can certainly go through some of them, uh, but in the interest of time, you know. So, so, but in any case, so I wanted to just spend a minute, uh, on the, you know, Glan Door, double yellow center line. So, uh, essentially, what this is, is this shows that, uh, we have presented this concept, uh, at, uh, numerous meetings in, uh, January, June 2015, and followed by, uh, you know, June 22nd. And, but I, what I really want to talk about is really the, uh, the design itself. So, uh, this is Ford, uh, right here, and this is Glan Door. Uh, if you notice, this is, this, look, this red line right here, that's the existing, uh, pavement curb on that side, and then the, uh, red line, it's on that side. That's the existing.
Why is it existing?
Right. And so, essentially, you have a very wide pavement intersection, and the concern, uh, that, uh, was brought to our attention at this intersection is that, uh, because of the wide-open intersections, uh, car, you know, making this right, you know, whip through this intersection going really fast. And same thing with this, uh, left turn, you know, car just, because of the wide-open pavement, it just whipped through, uh, the intersection really fast. So, uh, at a minimum, when we look at this intersection, what can we do to improve safety? So at a minimum, the first thing, what we would have done is to make sure we define the travel lane at this, uh, just at this intersection, because we want to tell people that, hey, if you're going fast here, you need to stay in, you know, lane, or on this left turn right here. So at a minimum, that, that's something that we would, uh, have to recommend to, uh, you know, provide, uh, lane marking. But we did more than that. Uh, in this case, in addition to the lane marking, we said, well, you know, the lane marking is not going to slow down cars. So what we have done is, we, uh, tee off the intersection to make it a little more conventional, and also we tightened the radius, which is shown right here. So by doing that, we're actually creating, uh, you know, more green space at the intersection, and at the same times, you know, school buses, emergency vehicle can still make that right turn. So, so, so this design right here, uh, you know, provides, uh, really, uh, you know, uh, safety operation for, uh, you know, vehicle at this intersection. And, uh, so that's, that's the design, and that's what's being, uh, implemented, uh, for our safety purposes. And I, I do want to note that, uh, you know, I know the residents had some, you know, concern with the, uh, double, uh, yellow center line right here. And, uh, I do want to note that, uh, if, if the yellow line were to be removed, uh, the concern that we have is the town's, the town's liability, uh, because, uh, the intersection has been identified, uh, you know, there are some safety concern, and the design is shown here, uh, provide that safety feature. And if the yellow lines were to be... And if the yellow lines were to be removed, if someone, you know, happens to, you know, get into an accident at this intersection, potentially, this person could sue the town. And next thing you know is the lawyer is going to be asking the town, oh gee, you know.
Okay. Let me ask you, so what's there today?
Double yellow line is there.
Not the squaring off of the...
Yeah, that's all there.
That's all.
That's what I'm asking, what's there today?
Yeah, this is what's out there today.
And how far down does that double yellow line go? Does it end?
It's 95 feet.
I don't know if there's an opportunity to share perspective. I'm sorry, this is my...
Not yet, yeah. But I know you're there, so.
Yep. So Ken, good, anticipating the discussion that's coming up shortly, could they put an island in between, a small island to separate it, as opposed to the double yellow line?
What...
In other words, to tell the traffic to stay to the right or stay to the left?
Yeah. What we would suggest is that in place of the yellow line, a narrow score flush, you know, island would be an option.
Would it have to be flush just for emergency vehicles?
I think it would have to be flush because of school buses and emergency vehicles, just in case they have...
So like a rumble or stones, like what's on...
Do we know if the school buses go down that street?
They don't.
They do, okay.
It'd probably be exactly what's up on the corner of...
Downey.
Summer and Sunset, or like we do with corners over High Rock. That's same, it's just simply a ground out cement.
Mother's scab.
Okay, so I know you love to, I'm going to ask you a question. Can you identify yourself?
Sure. Kara Buckley, and I live at 61 Glan Door Road.
Okay, hi Kara. Can you tell us why the yellow striped lines are the cause for concern?
So research shows that double yellow lines actually diminish property values because it creates the sense that it's more of a main road than it is, and the figure is not insignificant. So it's anywhere between 6% to 16% of homeowner value. So you can see why it would be an issue. You know, as Ken mentioned earlier, you know, he's indicating that they made these changes to the intersection, they narrowed and changed the shape of it because it was an unsafe intersection. But in reality, the intersection existed for three to four decades, and there were no accidents or issues added, right? So this is a very quiet side street with 11 houses on it, and in effect, changed the bottom of the intersection, installed double yellow lines, which could have a significant impact on home value. You know, what's more, there's, none of the residents and us can share earlier today, we haven't noticed any meaningful traffic increases. So now you still have a quiet road, you've added risk that our home values could be greatly diminished. And then on top of that, there's new research coming out of Europe, and as of February 2016, that indicates that W L lines can actually increase traffic speeds. Because people see them, they get a false sense of security, and they drive faster. And that's a similar issue that was raised on Forbes Street, and there was a W L line installed on Forbes, and the neighbors there petitioned, which is on the street over, to have that W L line removed for similar reasons. And it was in fact removed. So it's really for all of those reasons that the residents, you know, feel like the changes that were made created an issue. The issue was solved with double yellow lines, and it's going to be our home values that suffer for it. So we just don't think it's...
Yeah, I'm, not to be disrespectful, but I don't buy the value issue at its face. I, you know, just intuitively, I would think that there'd be benefit to increased safety for people if you had, where are your bus stops there, on your street?
The buses run down the road, so there's one at the corner of Forbes, Glan Door, and then there's one, you know, further down. I guess the other thing is, is I know the other options were explored there.
Yeah.
So like the island option, a lot of the residents actually said, we wouldn't mind an island.
Yeah, well, I think that's going to be looked into.
They were rejected for other reasons, and, you know, some of them were pricing. And, you know, to me, it's like, well, you know, you're going to potentially, because you might not buy it, but that's a data from US News and World Report and other Realtor sites. So, you know, it's hard data that I polled, and I did due diligence on the research. And some people believe it, and some people don't. But, you know, if it were your home, and it was the risk that you were taking, you probably wouldn't want the double yellow lines installed.
No, I'd want the safety, actually, over anything.
But I would just say we should look at other options.
What are the options? We have looked at other options. I'll give you an example. What we have looked at is, at one point, create a fairly, you know, like about a four-foot island right here, at a minimum, to perhaps, you know, have some short shrubbery to make it look nice. And we also have looked at an island along here, which I think, you know, this is, this is an older concept, where we have shown some, you know, score island at this point. So the concern that we have is, when we looked at the island that's over here, and emergency vehicle especially, have a tough time making this left turn. And we would have to encroach more widening into this...
Ken, is it an emergency vehicle going to take a left into the right lane?
Well, emergency vehicle or school buses, you know, those are the two main vehicle. We want to make sure that they could make that left turn safely. And it turns out that, you know, the encroachment, it's very wide, it was very tough. So we decided that, you know, this option is the most, you know, logical option, mainly because it reduces a lot of pavement, and it actually created some green space, and we create more of a T-off intersection.
Yeah. Why can't you just paint the stop line and just the square? I mean, the goal of the painted lines is to keep people in their lanes.
Correct.
But as long as they've made the turn, why does it need to continue down 95 feet? I mean, I live on a ten-house street, and it's a cul-de-sac, and the painted line at the end of the street when we hit Pond is, you know, people know they should be in that lane or the other, it kind of defines it. Why does it need, it seems like it's on steroids.
Good question. It doesn't have to be 95 feet, that's actually the other option, it could be shorter. And the key thing is, you know, especially, we want to make sure that the yellow line is long enough so that when car transition in this area right here, they do not encroach the opposing lane. So you are correct, so it doesn't have to be 95 feet, it could be shortened.
And then, if we could do that, I'm not sure if that would be satisfactory. Yeah, go ahead, you ask, but it just seems that that could be easier.
So Ms. Buckley, when you did your research on, I mean, this is a partial line, it's 95 feet. Is there any, there's no research on a 95-foot double yellow line, right? The research on is the entire street, is that correct?
Right. Yeah, but I would say, I mean, you moved in a few years ago, and you did a rigorous home search, and, you know, again, and everybody can draw their own conclusions, but we just, we frankly didn't look at houses that were, had any W L lines on them. We sort of eliminated them from the subset, right? So you're diminishing your market if it makes people uncomfortable. And so that's the, I mean, that's the issue, is that, you know, we all, we specifically sought out a home on a quiet side street, and then had W L lines installed a few years later, you know, because these changes were made to the intersection. And it's frustrating, I mean, it's frustrating, because it was a big investment for us, and homes are worth a lot of money here, and nobody wants to take, even if it's at the conservative end of the range, no one wants to take a 6% or even a 2% hit on the value of their home if some buyers are going to walk away because of that, when there could be other, you know, measures used.
So Ken, what's the shortest length that could be to be safe at that intersection?
Just looking at this physical right here, I would say it's probably about somewhere around here.
About half?
We could, yeah, probably about...
Because it's only in front of one property.
Right.
And it's not in front of yours, right, Ms. Buckley? It's, you're at 61, and this is only the corner.
It kind of stands far enough where it's in front of a couple of them. It's in front of the side of one house and in front of two other houses, and you can see it clearly from my house.
Well, I drove by it today, it seemed it only affected the first property, is with, it ends at the first property line for the house on the left.
The two, so there are two houses, so on the left-hand side of the map there, there are two houses that are on Glan Door, that are directly in front of the yellow line. And then, then you can see it, a few more houses down, and my house is one of them. So my house is, my driveway is just near the end of it.
So I guess, Ken, this was the most logical outcome, I get it.
Yes.
The clash between logic and this concern about what it does to the neighborhood. I still haven't heard all the other options.
The, I, let me just...
I'll answer. I think the public meeting that we had was days ago, wasn't even a true week ago. So I think at this point, we started to float some options out there. One of them would be that flush cement imprint. Another one would be like Ken mentioned, shrinking, reducing this down. I think the third option perhaps could be an island, but I, we've yet to truly...
Sounds like the island's a problem.
So it's just, it's...
Okay. You need to look into it.
Yeah, the concern is heard, and we're just trying to vet out some options, and, you know, perhaps see if we could brainstorm some ideas, but still have to go back to the drawing board to see what we could actually recommend to the board of selectmen.
Can I make a recommendation then? While you research it, that we cut it in half at this point in time? While you guys figure out, in other words, just paint half the line black again, so it's not double line for 95 feet?
Let's do the research and figure out what to do. I don't think...
I know I've mentioned this at the public hearing, the application of, you know, the double yellow center line. I do want to differentiate between, in this case, and also in the case of Canton. I think the application of, the use of the double yellow center line on Canton Street, the function clearly, you know, in the design manual, is really to channelize because, you know, of the, you know, higher traffic volume. And in this case, the yellow line right here, it's really served as to channelize car within the intersection, not an entire roadway.
Right.
Because of the curvature.
Because of the curvature in this case, too.
How long do you think before you could come up with something and come back to us?
Probably a few weeks, a couple, two to three weeks.
We're hoping to take a look at this list. There's a much more extensive list of recommendations that were made. And probably by the 28th, the next meeting of the board of selectmen, we'd like to run those things by, and the idea would be that in the spring and summer of next year, we'd make the improvements we come up with.
That might be too long, but I just, I want to acknowledge, Mrs. Buckley, that I think you and your neighbors have gone about this in a very thoughtful way, and I appreciate that. We need to let these folks do some more work. You've raised the concern effectively, even though I might not agree with some of your, as you and I both acknowledge. But, you know, nonetheless, it looks to me like it's on steroids, as I said before. And I think we have to find out what provides the safety, if there's another way to accomplish it that's a better balance for the street, for the neighbors. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, we are looking for safety. How we get there, we got to figure out.
May I have a check?
Yes, sir.
So Todd, I suppose it's kind of ironic that we go from safe, complete streets and safe, you know, bike paths and everything else, to going to how small Canton Street is. So, I mean, I look at this saying, okay, how does this really fit in the traffic calming measures versus pedestrian safety on Canton Street? And, you know, this comes up, so I'm just wondering how, what the long-term plan is, you know, as far as pedestrian safety on Canton Street? Are the residents concerned about it? And I know because I've run it, on Saturday morning, I've run it. And there is no room in some areas when you get to those islands. And if you think I'm going to step in the street when someone's coming in their car, I got a news fire, I'd rather jump over the wall than to deal with that. So I'm just wondering, long-term, you know, is there a plan to widen it at some point, wider than it is now?
I think at some point in time, and there's always the possibility and potential for sidewalks. Obviously, funding is the number one concern, right off the get-go, and then buy-in from all the residents, and so on and so forth. I think if, you know, the Complete Streets program has some more opportunities for the town to apply for some money and some funding, I do think it could be a potential project on, in the horizon. Only time will tell. Again, it's like everything, and I think a lot of what we deal with is, you need the buy-in from the residents as well. And the concept might be there, but to have all residents on board, that'll directly affect is another thing, too, so. But I hear you.
Anything else that you want us to hear about tonight? I think overall, this is great, and boy, it's come a long way. Took a long time, it's come a long way. I'd ask that you look at the Glan Door situation as a higher priority, you know, time-wise, try to see what you can come up with. We're eager to hear. And keep in touch with the neighborhood, too, as you analyze that. Yes, sir.
Can I offer a second opinion?
Can you identify yourself first, and then yes?
I grew up on Everett Street, I live in Dover now, but as I said it last June 22nd, 2015, I ride on that street all the time, and so I wrote it...
Which, Canton Street?
Canton Street, after the installation of the traffic calming features. And I wrote it to see if, you know, it was just in my head, but it's absolutely treacherous. When you get to that first traffic calming feature off the rotary, Mr. Ho claims that it was nine and a half feet wide in the last meeting. I'm two feet wide, a large SUV, mirror to mirror, is eight feet wide. There isn't enough room for the two of us in these alleyways. The Federal Highway Safety Administration warns that motorists will try to pass bicyclists in these alleyways, and that's why they recommend 14-foot wide lanes. So you've got nine and a half to 10-foot wide lanes, and you've got two choices. You can ride on the right side of the road and be, you know, scraped by a mirror or killed, or you can move to the center of the road. That area between Downey Street and Blue Hill Drive is the most dangerous because it's a slow uphill ride. By the time I get to the top of the hill, I'm down to 10 or 11 miles an hour, and I've got to move to the middle of the road to take command of the lane. And people, you know, they see the lanes, I appreciate that you put the signs up there that say the rider has the right to the lane. But, I mean, people get on my rear wheel, they're blaring their horns, they pull into the oncoming lane to try to beat me to the gateway, and it's incredibly dangerous. If I'm heading down Canton Street, heading toward Downey, it's a downhill run. I can't afford to stay in the middle, I have to take the middle of the lane because there is enough room in the alley for me and a car to pass me. And then, I mean, people are just on my rear wheel, blaring their horns, giving me a finger, and this kind of road rage is going to lead to an incident. Somebody's going to be installing a ghost bike on Canton Street, and people are going to ask the question, why did you do this? This is incredibly dangerous. And as far as the volume goes, you've had a modest decrease in volume. The data from 2014, before the closure of Blue Hill Drive, I take Todd's point, that people aren't going out the University Ave end anymore. But I used to drive to the train station every day, I'd go up Canton Street, down Blue Hill Drive, and a lot of people were going with me. So I would argue that the bulk of your volume decline is the closure of Blue Hill Drive, and people deciding that the Adelaide project and the expansion of I-95 is the good way to go, so they're not getting off at Canton Street and going out to the on-ramp at 95 Downey Camp. And thirdly, Paul Secard was at the meeting on Wednesday, he pointed out that the chief of police insists that there's a speed radar control on Canton Street every day. So I would say that whatever speed declines you have, it likely more attributable to the police presence than to the traffic calming features.
Are they out there every day?
No, they were out there every day. What was explained at the public hearing by Paul Secard was that, at the beginning, when the retail establishments were opened, during the opening in the spring, we, and I think it was prior to the installation of the traffic calming, we had religiously, on a daily basis, a cruiser assigned to go there at least for part of the day.
How long was that done for?
For several months until we got into the traffic calming measures.
Well, I tried to...
Traffic calming, so it was...
Yeah, I didn't think we were out there every day, but nonetheless...
It was something to send a signal as the establishment opened, that anybody using that as a cut through, we didn't think many would do that, but if anybody was, that they were to do so at a safe speed.
May I have one more question for Ken?
Yep.
Ken, like every study that's done, would he's done at the same time? You know, if it's done in June and September, you get different crowds, people are away, so traffic counts can be, if you will, just natural vacations, or...
Oh, it was, it was very important that timing, when we did the count, the answer is yes, we identified the exact location and similar timeframe.
Meaning school was in session.
Yeah, oh, school was in session, it was done, the previous count was done in the fall, and this is also done in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just because, you know, the traffic numbers can be skewed.
Oh, yeah, we want to make sure that we're comparing apples and apples.
We really want it to be straight up.
So in terms of the description of the bike riding and coming down from Downey on Canton, is there anything that can be done there? I mean, we only have so much road width, right?
This was brought up...
I see drop-off seats.
Hold on, I'm asking them.
This was brought up several times when we're in the process, when we're at 30%, 50%, 70%.
Yeah, I remember hearing.
And this is another example of the two sides of the story, that advocates for the islands were saying, well, this will be a good thing. Would you rather have a more narrow road that, yeah, it might not be as accommodating to a... Would you rather have a more narrow road that, yeah, it might not be as accommodating to a bicyclist, but forces vehicular travel to slow down? Or would you rather have it wider, but there is room for the bicyclist and cars can speed through? So it was, and there you are with another example of.
I think another major, another major feature that was accommodated and lis- and used to listen, to demonstrate that we're listening to the the met, the issues that Mr. Bruce was making. Originally, the traffic islands were supposed to be granite curvings, straight up. And we purposely angled them. The the idea was, and it was brought up, and we saw some merit to it, that a car could come down, hit the traffic island, and bounce, e- even if they were trying to avoid a bicyclist or stable high-riding bike, and bounce toward, and, you know, similar to what we have under the East Street Bridge, that can be a dangerous situation. Once you bounce, you bounce, you're you're moving quickly and in a different direction. So that was really the reason for angling. To not narrow the passageway for the cars would have defeated the whole purpose of putting the island in the first place. The island was there to narrow the, narrow the roadway slightly, to slow, to get the traffic to slow down as it went through each of these elements. We we understand, I mean, we tried to think of other things, like making a little pathway along the edge. We need to continue to explore whether or not there's something else we can do.
To Mike's note, this project was a traffic calming project. It wasn't in the installation of a bicycle lane or a sidewalk.
Not a complete street.
If the town wants to pursue that, we'd be more than happy to to continue to pursue that if the residents, if it's something that the residents feel they want. I I mean, I don't know. Like I mentioned before, it's going to involve a tremendous amount of volume from all the direct abutters that are going to be affected. So, but for this specific purpose, to aim it towards traffic volume and speeds, the data is what the data is.
There's an unfortunate, I'm going to make a broad statement, but there's a lack of civility on road ways. And people drive like each individual owns the road. So that means everybody who's on, think they're the one, they're the ones that own the road. And therefore, they can do whatever they want, which it's, I don't know, we could do enough to stop that kind of driving behavior. But I think you have to continue to look at this as a work in progress. And my comments about the success of this is if it did slow traffic down and if it did reduce volume, those are good things. And I I believe you when you say that it did. And I think one of the obvious things besides the Adalane is that University Avenue is now a fully functioning roadway, and it functions very well, and it's handling a lot of traffic effectively. I've been there various times a day, various days of the week, and it works. I think we'll see again this Christmas, but we've had wagmans now for thirteen months, and, you know, that was to be the test.
Right.
And we survived that.
And I think that the timing of the traffic signal at University Avenue of Canton and and Dedham Street is such that I went, the day of the meeting, I went home that way, just to see how bad the traffic queue was. I ended up waiting three cycles on Canton Street to get through, to cross, and then take the slip ramp home. There's no incentive now to use in Canton Street as a cut-through to that, to that slip ramp.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. And I think that 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 is in large measure the reason why we're seeing the drop-off in in volume on that street.
I think all the more reason we don't want to have Canton's traffic, truck traffic come into Westwood.
No, that's exactly.
Just a little side note. Uh, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it, and thank you as well for coming in. Great update. Really want to hear back from you soon on Glendore. Okay?
Will do.
Yeah.
I don't want this to go on months, at least not this session.
Make sure Ms. Buckley knows when we have a discussion.
Yeah, well, we'll have a, we'll have a conversation with Ms. Buckley about what we're, what we're thinking of, so we get our input. Okay.
Again, thank you for your effective advocacy. We'll stop at that on that one. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Onto another light topic. Ms. Lockname, please come forward. I think this is a multi-person discussion here tonight, but we have, we've asked for an update on the progress of the Islington Center Task Force. It's just to hear an update and have a discussion, but we, we're not taking any action tonight. We're not receiving any recommendations tonight.
And I have Jim McCarthy here, too. If Jim could come up and join me.
Point the report on the Islington Community Center.
So I'm passing around two things. One is drawings of of six current proposals, possibilities. So you know that the RFP that was submitted in June has been under review by the Islington Center Task Force for several months. And they had a meeting on September eighth, they first met to review that proposal and to determine that the minimum threshold criteria were met, and it was acceptable to move to the next stage. On September fifteenth, they had another meeting where they invited a proponent in to give a presentation of his proposal. And then on October thirteenth, the proponent came back to report on five alternatives instead of that one that he had originally submitted. All of those proposals, alternatives, were based on comments that had been received at previous meetings. And we have another meeting scheduled for this Thursday, the tenth, where the proponent is coming back with a six proposal. So what I have.
And the sixth one is in response to the discussion at the last meeting?
Yes, yes. In fact, there were comments that, it was a comment that was repeated at the last meeting that had been brought up at a prior meeting. That was a suggestion made by a gentleman when we were meeting in September, I believe, about looking to see whether they could keep the East Street and Washington Street facades of the ICC building.
I remember that.
So the, if you, there's an illustration on the last page of the packet.
So which option does that illustration go with?
That will be option six, which we don't have a floor plan yet.
Okay.
For options, a site plan for option six. That will be coming on the tenth. So the, the architect did provide a rendering just to give an idea of what he was thinking before he comes back with a full site plan.
Yeah, sorry to jump ahead. It's just, it's kind of interesting. They incorporated a lot of concepts into one.
So, so, right, the, the, what we will probably hear is that it's a recreation rather than a restoration of that building. Keeping in mind that that building was built in nineteen sixty-seven.
Right.
It's not, it's not well-built, and it's not in good condition. So it would be possible to keep those two walls up while you did some more work, but it probably wouldn't be cost-effective and depending on what you were doing with the rest of the building. If if what you're trying to achieve is maintaining the look of the church building, especially the steeple, you could better do that through a recreation.
And so Nora, and also, I I was a little bit surprised, the ICC building is in total less than fifteen thousand square feet.
It is, yes. It's fourteen and change, yes.
Right, fourteen and change.
Near term.
One point three.
One point three million. That just doesn't seem.
So it's one point three in the first year and about one point seven overall. So it's a continuing, over the twenty years, continued investment. But that first investment is significant because if you do anything, we're at the point where the value of the building is so low that any significant investment in.
Is it negative?
Maintenance, well, it brings you up to the need to meet codes. And so a lot of the requirements are serious code issues. Now, I, keep in mind that that one point seven million dollars, that doesn't put an elevator in the building. That doesn't make a truly accessible building. All it does is Band-Aid, you know, put it back together and make it better than it is now. It allows us to continue using it for the existing uses, but it doesn't make it a productive building.
In a layout that is, one could argue, not very.
And so that was my question, Nora, and I, in the, in the, in the Patruzzio original proposal, where they had the the library and then an addition, a two-story addition with community space, do you, what was the square footage of that addition?
Ten thousand square feet.
So it's better laid out, ten thousand square feet. I I, it's, I guess, it's less than the fourteen thousand, but it's better.
That's the rec. department use of the space, so.
Okay.
It it doesn't, it doesn't fully replicate the uses in the Islington Community Center.
Um, so the recreation department mainly uses space, the halls, that's what they use for most of the recreation programs. They don't actually use the space that the Youth and Family Services are using or the MMO. So, yes, it would. It would, it would allow them to use the Islington. If there was a new community center that was five thousand square feet and a new space for MMO that was five thousand square feet, that would replicate all of the recreation uses. It's a question of how much of the Youth and Family Services uses would would fit in there. It looks like the square footage would work, but it's, you know, it's too soon to tell until you have a building plan.
I know a little house on High Street.
Yes, yes.
So Nora, I'm sorry, we're jumping all over the place. Would it be easy just to quickly go through each option?
The different options.
Because I'm wondering if there's some that were a resounding no, and some that maybe we can get support around.
A sense of where the.
Sure. So the, the task force hasn't actually weighed in on the options yet. They've just heard a presentation of them. And when they meet on the twentieth, on the tenth, I'm sorry, Thursday night, they're going to begin weighing through the different options.
Okay. So I don't want to, I don't want to prejudge it then, if you were to, we're out of wait.
I can just explain what they are, though.
Sure.
The first page shows you in the crosshatch area, the spaces that we're talking about. The municipal lot, the ICC Wentworth Hall, which is the Islington Branch Library, and then a small lot that's actually the entrance to the driveway off of East Street. The second sheet labeled Option One shows a proposed mixed-use building on the west side of Washington Street, labeled Site One. That would be a building with about nine thousand square feet of retail uses on the first floor and twenty-eight apartments above. It also shows the Blue Heart Tavern renovated and located at the rear of the tailor shop lot. This proposal shows a CVS on the corner of the east, northeast corner of Washington Street and East Street, with a drive-through on the northern section of that building. Shows a shared parking area for the library, which under this proposal is relocated to the site of the existing CVS and Crown Cleaners with a ten thousand square foot addition behind. So that's the original proposal.
So I was going to say, right, okay, got it.
That's Option One.
Okay.
That's all we've seen.
That's the one we've seen, right.
Right. Option Two has Site One containing a CVS on the, on the northwest corner of Washington Street and School Street. It moves the Blue Heart Tavern forward onto Washington Street in front of what's now the municipal, municipal parking lot. It moves Wentworth Hall, the Islington Branch Library, to that side of the street as well, and puts it up on the, on the sidewalk to create a street edge. Going across to the east side of the street, it proposes a mixed-use building with about ten thousand square feet of retail on the first floor and twenty-eight one-bedroom apartments above. And then it renovates the existing CVS building to be space for MMO and community space, a little bit less in that case than the original proposal of ten thousand square foot, where it was going to be addition to the library. This proposal would have six thousand square feet. So that may be tight.
Two-story?
Two-story, yes.
So basement and ground?
Basement and and street level off of Washington. And then also has a retail space where Crown Cleaner is now. If you go onto the website, you can see renderings as well that give you an idea of what it looks like. The thought of the CVS building being renovated to a community space, if you think of it the way it looks now, it's pretty unappealing. But the architect's renderings of what they could do with that space, where they're really just.
Create windows and.
Yes, keeping the space, putting on a sloped roof, and it's, it's.
Yeah, it's keeping the bones, but.
Exactly. Reusing what you can and substantially rehabbing the rest of it.
What is that building built of, built out of the CVS? Any idea? Any idea what it is?
Probably wood family, probably wood family building.
Just with the stucco-type finish?
Yeah, given the age.
All right, moving on to Option Three. This one goes back to having the mixed-use building on the northeast corner, Site One. Here, though, that building has changed so that the retail has increased to fourteen thousand square feet, and the number of apartments on the second and third floor are reduced to twenty apartments. This one differs a little bit from the original proposal also in that it moves the Blue Heart Tavern forward on School Street, still on the former tailor lot, but puts it up near the street. If you're going to renovate, go the trouble to renovate a start building, you really don't want it hidden in the back. Uh, this one keeps the CVS proposal pretty much the way it was on the, on the northeast corner of the street with a drive-through through the parking lot area, and keeps the library and community space building as shown in the original proposal.
That was really two, two changes, changing the, the.
The mix of the mixed-use building and moving.
Yeah.
I think this one also takes the tailor shop out of, out of the picture, places it with parking.
Both of them, even the original one, had no tail, the tailor shop was removed.
Okay.
All the proposals call for the tailor shop to be removed. Uh, moving on to Option Four. Option Four now, again, goes back and looks at the CVS on the northwest corner. Has the Blue Heart Tavern and Wentworth Hall, where we saw them in the previous go-around. But it keeps the ICC building undisturbed, so that the town's current uses in the ICC would remain there. So they would not factor into the proposal. They would not be looking to replicate a new community space or new space for the MMO. All they would be doing was relocating Wentworth Hall to the other side of the street and moving the Blue Heart Tavern next to it. And so then that, this, this proposal has a mixed-use building no longer on the corner. Now, it's mid-street. It's in the location where the Wentworth Hall and the CVS Crown Cleaners building are now. And that proposal has about fourteen thousand square feet of retail with twenty-eight one-bedroom apartments above.
Say anything about renovating the existing community center?
No, it does not. It does not. This would not, this would be a proposal that would ask for three, possibly two, of the parcels that are up for renovate, for the RFP. One would be the municipal lot. They wouldn't actually ask to take the municipal lot. They would ask to locate buildings on that, and in exchange for that, trade a portion of the tailor shop lot to add municipal parking in the back. And then it would propose using the Wentworth Hall parcel. It would not touch the parcel that has the ICC, and I don't think it would have any reason to take the, the parcel that has access to the parking lot as well. Then moving on to Option Five, this one actually doesn't touch Site Two at all. The east side of Washington Street remains as is. The ICC remains in its current configuration, current use. Wentworth Hall remains the same, doesn't touch those. The CVS and Crown Cleaner building remains as is for now, but there would be a proposal that would, they would come in of their own right and redevelop that as a, a commercial property. What it does do is request a, an approval to purchase the portion of the municipal lot that's needed for this mixed-use building that's proposed. And this is a mixed-use building, I think it's the same as in Option Two, fourteen thousand square feet of retail with twenty one-bedroom apartments above. And it also has the Blue Heart Tavern moved up to the front of School Street.
It replicates the lost parking.
Yes, it does. It does. So it meets the, the requirements of the RFP because it, the parking it borrows, it gives back in another location. But it doesn't do anything related to the town services on the other side of the street.
Or he could build a smaller building and not swap off the parking and.
Right.
That's kind of what he could do now.
So that's, that's the next option, that there was no point in putting that together for a plan because that's not an option that would be reviewed under the RFP. That's an option he has all along to develop his commercial properties for commercial uses.
Because he is the property owner.
Right.
He already does own the property. I know I've heard discussions of people saying, you know, we don't want properties to be in the hand of one property owner. Well, it's either the town or him.
And he can rely on the parking, in the municipal parking lot, to satisfy some of his parking needs.
Right. Our zoning allows the use of the municipal parking spaces for any buildings within four hundred feet of those parking spaces. That was the intent, that that land was bought for and converted to a parking lot for, so that maintains his, the option of the property owner. And then the last one, which we don't have a plan yet, is just this rendering. It would have the mixed-use building. This one is probably the closest to Option Two, I believe.
Is that replica the same length? Because I was out there today, and it looks long, it looks much longer, yeah.
So you can see that.
It's all the way over the library property.
Right. The, the second, the gable end that's facing Washington Street, the first gable end closest to the corner, that one is a replication of the ICC gable on that end. The next gable structure you see would actually be where Wentworth Hall is now.
So would this be the next used building and CVS across the street?
Yes, it would. So this would be, this would be a version of Option Two that changes the architecture of the mixed-use building that's on the northeast corner of Washington East Street and replaces it with a building that replicates some aspects of the Islington Community Center.
So it would be residential on the second floor here?
Residential on the second floor, and there is a third floor there. I don't know that, you know, I, I don't know what the proposal is to get light to that. We don't see the back of this building. It's likely that there are windows on the third floor at the back of that building. I don't think it's a two-story building. I think it's a three-story building. You know, it could be, that could be loft space or it could be designed with, with window access. I just don't know because I don't have the rest of the package yet. We'll get that on the tenth.
That's a very interesting idea.
My understanding is that there would be, there would be underground parking under this building as well. So another reason why you're not reusing the building. So another reason why you're not reusing the building, you're replicating the appearance of the building.
But that's very creative, very, very creative.
So Nora, is the expectation on the tenth, the task force will take a vote?
No, absolutely not. So the task force will be, begin their review of all the different proposals and begin deliberation on those proposals. I don't know how long that'll take. I would, I would think they will eventually be doing that. So we're going to, at the task force meeting on the tenth, we're going to begin by having all the members of the task force receive copies just like this with all the full sets of plans, review them and make a list of all the questions that they still have that they want to ask for the different options. And then get to the point, the developer will come back in the middle of that meeting and further discuss Option Six, and then we will concentrate on which options, if any, we think we can just immediately throw out, which ones require further discussion. At a minimum, the task force will meet another time before they make an opinion or recommendation. I expect them to meet much longer than that. I think that it could go on for several months.
Yeah, well, this is kind of a big deal.
It is, and I think they want to review very closely. It's, I think it's evident, I know, we're fortunate to have so many people who are interested in this project and getting involved. I think that's great. And I think that the Islington Center can have a future that everyone is involved in and we will end up with something that, that most people are going to be happy with. So it's great that people are getting involved. A lot of people misunderstand the process. And we hear constantly two sides of the same mouth. One, why don't you just hurry up and deny this? And then two, why are you rushing it? Why don't you take longer with it? So we kind of can't do both, so we have to get the information.
I would have to think that town meeting is a deadline, though. If we don't take anything to town meeting in May...
We are not planning to take this to town meeting in May. I think there's a... I think, yes, the developer, yes. I think that, you know, there was a point back in June when we first asked for the RFP that we thought that May was a possibility. I don't think it is at this point. I don't, I think there's, if, if the task force makes a recommendation of a single proposal and the proponent develops that concept plan to a level that he can bring it to the selectmen and request approval, and if the selectmen then grant approval to proceed with plans, it has to go through a planning board review, conservation commission review. Depending on what the proposal is, it may need a zoning board review as well. So it's a lengthy process. So I don't see us being ready for the May town meeting. You know, we'll see if we make it for the fall town meeting. I think that the idea is to get everyone involved, have them review aspects of the proposal and make their suggestions. I think it's clear. Another thing we hear is that many people have said over and over again, "The task force is not listening to us." Well, the task force exists to listen to people. It was created just about a year ago. I think you created it last September. We had our first meeting last November. And the board has public comment at every single one of its meetings, and the idea is to bring in input. The fact that we have six proposals coming from one is, I think it's evident that not only is the task force listening to the residents, but the developers listening to the residents and trying to give reasonable responses to the comments that they're hearing. Whether we get to a point where we have a proposal that makes sense to everyone, I don't know. But we're certainly moving in the right direction.
I don't want to see all this time and effort if at some point the developer says, "I've waited too long. I'm doing my own thing. Let me just pull permits for what, for my own properties." So are we, we think he's okay with elongated process potentially into the spring of 2018?
It's to his best interest to continue in discussions with the town. If we get to the point where either the town or the developer feels that working together is not the way that either of us can meet with success, then we'll go our separate ways. The town will manage its own properties and the developer will manage their own properties. But as long as there's an opportunity to potentially reach a better situation by working together, we'll continue to do that.
Do we think he's aware of the timeline?
He's, he's aware of the timeline, yes.
Jim, you're here.
Yes, I am.
Islington Community Center.
Yes.
We have a report.
We do.
It's a rather gloomy report. It's telling us things that you had been telling us all along, that there's a lot that needs to be done to the building.
Internal assessment over the past year or so, and then we had this company come in just kind of verify and see if there's anything that we missed. Our numbers and theirs pretty much came in right about the same numbers. Obviously, their report's very detailed and gives us kind of a 20-year outlook for the building.
Yeah, and I think what's particularly important is that it's things that just to look at the building, you don't know. Some of them you do, but a lot of the big items are things that, you know, we'd have to do even though a user might not realize it.
And the still unknowns, like the electrical upgrades and stuff like that, you really don't know until you get into it. So there were placeholders, but those numbers can fluctuate far higher or there could be less.
And these numbers don't include the architectural work, the planning, the financial cost of putting out the bid to do the work. None of that is included in here. I think it's, it's...
And that could be 10%, 15%.
I think it would be a minimum of 15% knowing what, knowing how many unknowns there are. So I think it'll be high.
That's, that's the other part of it is, and once you get into the actual renovation, you're gonna bump into things you don't know.
And, and it's important to point out that, that it's not at a point where it can be reviewed by the building commissioner either to determine if what's proposed in here is sufficient to cure the defects. I know we hear from people that, that are concerned that the town deferred maintenance and because they deferred maintenance, we have this expensive bill for what needs to be done now. And that's not at all the case. So it's when you begin the first step. Eventually, a roof needs to be replaced. Eventually, siding needs to be replaced because the value of the building is not all that high. When you do any of those defects, when you kick in the code requirements. So they haven't applied yet. It's not that we've put off doing the work. We haven't had to do it and we're not doing what we don't have to do until we make a decision on whether we're keeping the building. So we don't want to throw good money after bad.
Yeah, but this is not a building that the town has owned since its origins. We bought it as a building that we knew...
We hope to hold together for five, 10 years. We've done that. But we get to the point where if you're making any investment in changes to the building, which you are going to need to do, you now have to meet code requirements that jump those costs way up. And as I said, this doesn't mean putting an elevator in. It doesn't mean making the bathrooms...
Putting a kitchen in.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't make all the facilities fully ADA compliant. It gets them to the best place you can get them in that existing building.
It reminds me of our old main library that would have been very difficult to renovate or make function the way we needed it to. And the handicap accessibility requirements only put it even further out of reach to do it with the existing building. And not every existing building can be retrofitted to serve the needs. And it's also configured in a way that doesn't work real well for us.
Right, you end up with a building that might now come close to meeting code requirements, but it, we haven't improved the inefficiencies.
It's still not, not a great building for our needs.
And of the 14,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet is useful.
Right.
And it never was purchased for the long term. We did purchase it short-term. It met some of our needs for space and the idea was, the building had no parking. We had, we owned the parking, so we were the best owner for it. And we got a significant discount. It was after price of the assessed value at the time.
And we protected it from development that we weren't ready for. We wanted time, we wanted to buy time to revise the zoning, to get us to a place where we could protect the town.
And people were interested in it for housing.
Yes.
And the church was interested in keeping it for five years so they could continue to use it and that the MMO could stay in place, and they couldn't do it on their own anymore, so.
They tried. They tried to figure out other ways. So you've been on this task force for a year. What do you think?
I think that we just got all six plans and I think that, and I said to Nora, my last spoke with her, is that, you know, it came in so fast, I couldn't tell you the difference between one and two until we finally got this tonight. So I think it's the task force needs to take a little time and digest it and give the public a little time to digest the proposed options. And I think we're gonna have, what, the sixth one tomorrow? I think it could be seven or eight, but we reach one that everybody comes somewhat more comfortable with. I think the process is going just fine. I mean, I think by having more meetings, we give people who couldn't attend one an opportunity to come another time. We've gotten lots of comments by email and I've received lots of phone calls in addition to emails. So, I mean, I hear the residents reaching out and they have concerns and we're trying to get the best we can. I mean, I think some people think we're rushing it, but it's a year already and, you know, we just got six new ones, so we'll wait through those.
We're so far away from the end.
Yes.
You know, what I think people seem to be saying is, "You're not listening because we want this just to go away." And we'd like all the discussion just to stop. But to do that is one of these options essentially. And we still have a 1.2-plus million dollar problem along with a library problem that a building needs money. And we haven't done anything to help improve the Islington Center.
There's, there's so much more than just the buildings. There is a need for traffic improvement. There's a need for pedestrian improvements. There's a need for landscape upgrading and other changes to the area that if we were to ignore this proposal, it would be irresponsible. So I think that people don't understand why we're looking at it. We're looking at it because we have a problem and there's a potential solution. We might not get there, but why not look at it? Why not research and determine whether or not there's a, a solution that works for everyone? If there isn't, we never have to, we can dismiss it when that time comes. But we're not at the point where we know that yet.
I just think overall, change is slow and you have to get people on board. And I think right now, they can't visualize how this is gonna work, so.
Well, in the meantime, we get to see...
Don't sell the town property, et cetera, et cetera. But, I mean, some people would prefer Islington to never change. And Mr. Gillett will tell you, there used to be a committee years and years ago who there aren't any around to come and help us now. If that's all they're able to do is to develop Islington.
Mr. Decatur and Company, yep.
Unfortunately, doing nothing's not an option. So either we work with the developer or we work on our own, but we need to make improvements in Islington.
Change is going to happen whether or not we're part of it.
I think that's the message. It's too often, what I hear is like there's a referendum. You know, we're gonna say no and nothing changes, but it's just not the reality.
It does change. It decays. It further decays. And we have serious vacancy issues. You just had a report earlier about the importance of the split tax rate and the importance of increasing and maintaining commercial tax ability. And if you look at Islington Center, it's not just at the corner. It feeds down the street. We have a serious erosion of our commercial base in Islington. So it's incumbent upon us to do what we can to improve the situation.
Truth of it is that over 15 years ago, we redesigned and rebuilt Washington Street, put the utilities underground. And the sole purpose of doing that, along with a study of the, of the center, was to improve the center and, and its functionality and the amount of commercial activity that went on. And we really haven't seen much of an improvement in the commercial sector that was generated from this. This is the first time we've gotten any meaningful, meaningful wholesale discussion about how to redesign the center.
Right. We've made public improvements. We've done what we can. School Street Playground has come a long way. Morrison Park has been improved. The roadway functions better than it had before. The lighting is improved. We have some businesses in the, in the Islington Pizza Block that weren't there before. There's a new ice cream store getting ready to open up. I think the Wild Blossom has been a success. So there are little pieces that, that have improved because of the investment that we've made, but there's so much more that, that just hasn't.
I just think people think it's just too much, too fast for them, that they can't really digest it as fast. And that's why I think by, you know, going through these and giving them other options and letting them see it, you know, give them a little time to digest it. They'll get a chance to see the building that's being built by Petruzzio now. Fire station will be open.
Fire station will be open.
There'll be a whole bunch of things that'll start to happen naturally before we even get to any of this, so.
It's important for people to know that they can continue to participate. Whether they come to the meetings or submit their information by email, I send everything to the task force. If they want to call, I'll take notes and a phone call and send those to the task force. So every message gets through.
So which building has the tennis court on top of it?
Nope, none of them do that.
That would be rendition seven.
That's our next meeting. The following Thursday, we'll be discussing tennis courts.
Just suddenly I looked at it, I said, "There's the answer to our tennis court need."
Tennis courts meeting is on the 17th at the Thurston Middle Suite Cafeteria at 7:00.
That's a recreation department meeting, of which that will be a discussion item. Wow.
Thank you, Nora.
To the task force, keep, keep doing your work. It's really important. It's valuable work. And I appreciate the fact that people have concerns and you're giving them the ability to share concerns, express new ideas. I mean, as evidenced by this drawing in the back, people are listening. And there are some really creative things that could happen here, so thank you for the update. We're, we're here whenever there's more news. Okay?
Thank you.
Terrific. Jim, thanks for staying along, too. Appreciate you being here. Well, speaking of Islington, we have a request to extend the MMO Nursery School lease. And we do so annually. And it allows, the timing is such that it allows the preschool to start planning for a year from now, for the next school year. Hey, Mike, thanks for joining us tonight. So we are being asked now to do a one-year lease extension. Let me make sure I get the time right. So we'll take it, yes, to August. That's the date I was looking for. So an extension out to August 31st, 2018. So it's that fall 2017, spring 2018 school year.
Right.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? We have information on maintaining the annual rental rate?
Yes, I, I talk to them. That's what they can afford.
Yeah, they're pretty tight.
They're tight.
Yep. Not, their revenue stream doesn't give them a lot of flexibility.
Doesn't, yeah.
And I'm sure they don't want to be hiking the rates.
They would prefer not to have to do that.
So, any questions?
No, I had 100, but I, no, I'm not really... I mean, I'm just, I get concerned that going forward with the Islington Task Force, if we're charging them so, such low rent, and I don't know. I don't have anything to compare it to. I don't know what, you know, commercial space costs. Is it, is it our obligation to start to get them in line with what could happen?
I was thinking that very thing. I had a discussion with them because my intent was to come here and propose a rate increase to get them more in line with the thing. I think the, I think they're at a, at a point where they'd rather not have to go and see whether or not it would affect... Because anytime they raise their rates, they're...
They gotta pass the rate through.
They gotta pass it on and, and that means that their clientele could change. And they were hoping that we could just maintain the rent for another year, especially given the, you know...
This is a kick the can down the road.
I know. That always becomes a problem.
I mean, it's why, I guess for me, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly. I, I fear at some point we've created this reliance, you know, the town is gonna continue to subsidize this program.
Well, we did raise the rate a couple of years ago, so.
2013, we're on the cusp of 2017.
Yeah, I understand.
It seems like a couple of years... It's gonna be through 2018, so it's only 1% a year from the last five.
I'm ultimately fine with it, but I think that needs to be a serious discussion. I think we're all at a crossroads.
I think that when we have some more clarity, after, the process is still here. I think we have some more clarity, then we can sit down and have a, a good discussion with them about next year, if there's a lease extension or what, or what determines.
I mean, I get it. It's valued. I hear nothing but good things and it's a good community institution. I don't want to be part of its demise, but there's a tension point.
But talk about subsidizing. If we have to put a million, too.
Into that building.
Into that building, that subsidy we'd be giving to that preschool program would be...
Oh, it's huge.
Extraordinary.
And, and Mike, I'm sure there are critics out there who are gonna say they should be charging them more and taking the excess money and putting it back into the building. I mean, we're gonna hear all the arguments, especially as, you know, the task force goes forward and the final proposals come in, that's what we're gonna hear, "Why haven't we done this over the years?"
Some of the very families that use this building are from that general area.
They're making that same argument, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. All right.
Motion to kick the can? Oh, I'm sorry. Emotion, please?
I move that we extend the MMO, really known as Mother's Mornings Out Nursery School Lease, for another year and for the lease to expire on August 31st, 2018 at the annual rate of $84,000 per year.
All in favor? I oppose none. For the record, let it be known that we support the MMO preschool program.
You just witnessed it.
You know, and I think the task force is doing a great job carrying the advocacy for them. Okay, appointments. Looks like our former selectman from Islington wants to do some more work. Okay, so we have three people up for election officers. Mike Beaumont, yeah, Chow. Chow Anderson and Kathleen McElroy. Dottie Powers is putting them forth as election officers. I guess we better say yes, she needs them tomorrow. Okay, any questions or comments?
No.
Motion?
I move that we appoint Michael Beaumont, Chow Anderson and Kathleen McElroy as election officers with terms to end on June 30th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose none. Okay.
Does she have to call them now and tell them?
Yeah, I think she's already done it.
An assumption of approval. There was an assumption of approval. We just made it official. Okay, so next we have acceptance of local cultural council funds. That clock says it's 20 of 11.
It's only quarter time.
Sorry, I know. But it feels like it's 20 of 11, which to my point is, can you explain this really briefly for us, Mike?
Sure. It's $4,500 that we annually receive from the state, and it requires that the board of selectmen approve the acceptance and authorize me and Pam to be the signatories. So moved to the finance.
Wait, I just have a question. Why do we have all this stuff about the contracted scope of services covers and the mass council and all that?
So you can say.
It's just a lot of added.
It's a lot of stuff that gets added.
So it's been doing the same way all along, every year?
Yes, every year.
I looked at all that, and I said, I don't ever remember.
His page is just, change the date.
Change the date, change the amount. I don't ever remember it being put forth like that. Okay. Your motion is what?
Yes.
Authorize the chairman to sign the contract or authorize signatory listing identifying Michael Gillette, Town Administrator, and Pam Dukeman as the finance director, as the authorized signatory names for the Massachusetts Cultural Council transferring funds totaling $4,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none. Our projects keep going on. I don't think you really didn't need us to comment on anything.
The pictures are great, though, Mike.
Yeah, the pictures are great. They really give you a good sense.
They're outside when we came in.
For the cement.
Yeah, they were working into the night, tonight.
Yeah. For the record, I want the public to be aware that the fire station schedule is likely to extend until February. One of the issues, however, is site work, completion of site work, which could cause a delay in the completion.
Into the spring.
Into the spring. So that's weather dependent. And I think people have been patient, and will continue to be patient. We're going to end up with a great fire station. It has fallen behind schedule, but nonetheless, we are going to have a beautiful fire station. Unfortunately, the interim station is working out well, so it's all good.
I just had one question.
It'd be nice if, you know, we could have.
I didn't know what that was, Mike.
Yeah, that's, that's an original.
You know, it's much better to have early in the.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's better to have the grand opening in the warmer weather anyway.
Much better. Well, I think, you know, it does require a certain amount of patience, but we'll get there. Okay, future meetings, gentlemen?
I only had one correction. It says the Monday after Thanksgiving. It's actually the Monday after my birthday.
Or, in my household, the night of my husband's birthday.
All right, there we go.
So, have a dinner beforehand. So, yes, we have two meetings that are scheduled the 28th of November, the 12th of December. So now we're looking into January, and I've spent a little time on this, so I'm going to propose some dates. January 9th for a regular meeting.
Good.
Be closing the warrant, the annual warrant. On the 24th, we should probably have a short meeting before the FinCom.
6 o'clock?
And we don't need to get that early.
6:30?
6:30, usually.
It's the 24th and 25th. Oh, no, no, I meant to, January.
January, ready.
Oh, you are, too?
I'm on January. Did you say the 23rd or the 24th?
24th.
Okay.
So, we're going to be at that meeting. 6:30 would be fine, and subject to, if we need it.
Okay.
To have a full meeting on the 30th, and, which we may find we don't need, one or the other. I think we should just start holding these. And.
And then into February?
Note that on February 7th, that's when the municipal budget is presented to the Finance Commission. So I just think we should be aware of that and try to attend. So the 13th, I would say, for a meeting, and the 27th in February.
I'm okay with that one so far.
And then going into March.
Can I ask you about, I'm sorry, Christine, what was the date of the Christmas relating?
It's Sunday, Sunday, December 4th, at 4:00, right here.
Okay.
Of course, you'll be at the Eagle Scouts First at 2:00.
Dress warmly, and you can go from one to the other.
Dress warmly, yeah.
Okay, so going into March, we have the FinCom public hearing on the 6th, so we should have a short meeting before that, 6:30. I, we can't go the whole month without a regular meeting, so I suggest the 20th.
No, I can't be there on the 27th. That's okay. So do not do a short meeting that day.
That's fine. We'll only do it if we need it, if we need to. But I, I'm not anticipating that. I think some of these short meetings we will need.
Okay.
But we may want to meet if it's to prepare for the meeting.
To go over the articles?
Yeah, whatever. So, you know, we should hold the 6:30 meetings, but we wouldn't do any action.
Yeah, okay. Just because I can't be here that night.
Okay. And then going into April, I would say the 10th and the 24th.
24th, I will not be back.
Okay. And the 25th is Election Day.
Let me see. I don't know that I'll be back.
Oh, April 25th, okay.
So the 10th is okay, because that's before school vacation, John.
I'm fine.
Yeah, the 25th is Election Day.
Correct.
So the 24th.
So if necessary, I could do the 26th.
Um.
The Wednesday?
I just want to have enough time before town meeting. The town meeting's a week later.
Right.
All right. Let's hold the 24th, and we'll probably have a light meeting. I just, we needed to prepare for town meeting in any way. I think we should have, have that have enough time. Okay. So that just gets us through the year. Not post-election, but through the year. Mike?
Yep.
You all right?
I'm fine so far.
Okay, let's stop there. I can't think of mine. That was hard, no.
Just saying no, we usually on the 15th anyway.
Just pacing it out. Right. Well, you know, it's paced out. There's kind of some predictability in there for any public hearings, which I know that's probably the most important thing for you. But if any of the ones are like the short meetings, stay away from those so we can be flexible. And I'd say the one that we might not need is the 27th of February. So I would hold off on putting anything in that one. Confirmed, TBC. TBC, whatever you want. But that one I would say is the most flexible one.
Okay.
Okay?
December 8th, the West Cats having their VIP opening. Is everybody available? Because they just said that it's a Catholic holiday.
Yes.
Something, no, it's something.
What date is it?
Summer 8th.
December 8th. It's, um, Immaculate.
It's to the Immaculate.
Thank you, Nora.
Good Catholic. I don't know if that mean, I don't know if that means if anyone goes to Mass. They were going to hold it that night, but then they found out that that Mass happens, and they wanted to know if it should be.
So what are they holding?
VIP, Media Center opening.
So it's multi-hours. How many hours are they holding it? 6 to 9, 7 to 9, what are they doing?
She didn't say. It would be at night.
Yep.
So I'm not sure what times start.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. If they want to have it, then.
She was going to ask her board, too, just to check.
Yeah, that's where.
I just want to tell her, okay.
She's accountable to them, we're okay.
Yeah, okay with BOs.
Okay. And minutes. Let's look at the minutes from October 3rd. I've got, October 17th, I don't want to vote on, but I want to give you some feedback.
Huh?
Maybe, maybe.
Okay. Okay, so any comments on the minutes from October 3rd?
No.
No.
Um, I'll just, yeah, I just have a typo. It's not even worth reading into the minutes. It's a capital T, should be a small t, and remove an apostrophe.
Oh, okay.
So, if we want to say as amended, it's only catching a typo.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none. The, I want to hold off on voting on the October 17th, but can we look on page nine? And I'll give you, we have this section under all business with the update. And the fact that I was reporting that project's progressing and stuff, we, we aren't the ones that oversee the project, so I thought, instead of having that, we should just include as an addendum what we had in our packets.
Okay. You want all the bullet, you think all the bullets, the bullet points?
Yeah.
Is it really old business?
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, it is. It's ongoing.
Continuing business?
Yeah. Yeah. Something brief. Just, what's good is it puts in record where things stood at a point in time in our, you know, for, for history purposes, but I don't think we need a commentary stuff in there. So if you can bring that back to the next meeting, that'd be great. Okay. Any other business?
Questions in the press?
Okay, I'll take care of that.
We have some press here.
Any questions from the public or the press? No questions. Thank you for being here, though. Appreciate it. Okay, our next meeting is on the day after John Hickey's birthday, Monday, November 28th.
We have to pray a cake.
No. Sorry, John.
Yeah, come on.
We celebrate for the whole month. So we'll be back here on Monday, November 28th, at 7:30. And in the meantime, I wish everybody a nice Thanksgiving, because it will be post-Thanksgiving, and we will get through tomorrow. So, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, none. Thank you.
Thank you.